Here.
Here.
Here. Can you all stand and join me with the place? We are going to have an office later for, probably ringing for a reserve officer. He's tied up in traffic because of a traffic accident. So, we're going to go ahead and advance a little into the agenda. And when he comes in, then we'll go ahead and order the agenda accordingly. We're going to go ahead on the citizens' comments. Any citizen that wishes to speak to any item not on the agenda can sit up to three minutes. Normally, we don't engage in conversation during citizens' comment. We also have cards to fill out if you want to speak to any item that's not on the agenda. Do we have any cards? Okay. When you come up, please say your name and indicate whether you live in the city of Oregon City or not.
The first two speakers are John Williams and Norm Stewart. And you can use the podium in the back of the room, please.
Gentlemen, my name is John Williams. I live in Oregon City, the South End. I'm the past chairman of the South End Neighborhood Association. And that's the reason for being here tonight. A little background. Back in nineteen, excuse me, about nineteen ninety-nine, I undertook the task of writing a tree ordinance by gathering tree ordinance, tree ordinance around the state and compiled one and gave it to the staff. And they fleshed it out and we passed that ordinance at that time, dealing with what trees could be planted, how, when, where, etc. Unfortunately, somewhere in the process of the next commission, a tree ordinance was struck and was handed over to the Natural Resources Committee, the duties of the tree ordinance and the tree committee. And then that committee became dysfunctional and was not functioning. So no attention is paid, that I know of, to street trees and the problems we seem to be having in our town over there. I'll let Norm give you the details of what we've done. But I did ask Norm last year to take the chairmanship of our tree committee because we've been hearing so many complaints. And Rocky, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sis, could attest to the fact that he complained to me way back when he was running about how many people at the door were complaining about trees and what was happening with them in sidewalk upwelling. And my comment is, if the city is going to continue to require tree planting by developers, by homeowners and builders, I think they have a moral responsibility to do something about the methods that have been adopted in the past or been used in the past that are causing thousands and thousands of dollars of damage to sidewalks. If we want them to plant them, we've got to either show them how or make sure they plant them correctly. And otherwise, there's going to be ten or fifteen or twenty more years of sidewalks falling to pieces and lots of complaints about it. Well, let Norm explain. Norm?
Norm is the present chairman of the South. Good evening, Mr. Stewart. I'm Stewart, Neighborhood Association. As John stated, we did an investigation of the sidewalks in our neighborhood out there. We went door to door, talked to a number of people. There are problems with this.
Oh, okay. All right. Normally, people tell me, "Be quiet."
Anyway, so we went out and we took a number of pictures. We communicated with the city manager. We asked for and received a number of written complaints and statements from citizens of the area. And then, in the meeting that we had, that was on the meeting of the association on January twenty of two thousand and eleven, a motion was presented to the members there. And I'll read that to you and then we'll leave this information with you to study at your convenience. And hopefully, the end results will be the examination of policies and hopefully some action to relieve some of this pressure on citizens and property owners. We're not looking for a handout and resolving problems by money is not necessarily a solution. But good leadership can work miracles. And that's what we're basically asking you for. Okay. Motion is substance four. Whereas property owners of South End, April Grove, West Lane Farms, Neighborhood Association have reported serious sidewalk upwells caused by root trees or tree roots from trees incorrectly planted or in parking strips too narrow for the growth. And whereas said owners have reported costs of thousands of dollars to repair the sidewalks. And whereas, in most cases of sidewalk damages, builders, developers were required by city ordinances to plant trees on the streets. And whereas said property owners had little or no say in the species selected or the planting thereof. And whereas, Oregon City management has indicated the city was conducting a citywide sidewalk study, which will be presented to the commission. So therefore, we, the members of the two neighborhood associations, should jointly urge Oregon City Commission to examine the state of affairs, reviewing appropriate ordinances and administrative regulations on street tree planting, sidewalk maintenance, and most importantly, review the trail of liability for cost publicly incurred upon incorrect planting and management of that program. And I'll time. Thank you.
The two speakers are Stephen Ray and Stephen Dan Haverby.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Stephen Ray. I live in the Oak Grove housing development, Austin, Butler. And I just wanted to reiterate what these two gentlemen said as an individual. We moved into that community in nineteen ninety-six when the homes were being built. And when the trees came around to be planted, we talked with the nursery folks that were planting them. We asked that we did not have the tree planted on our property because we were afraid of the sidewalks and the trees being damaged by them. But it was mandated by the city. And we were also guaranteed by them that these were street-primed trees. They'd been selected because of that reason. Not only our home, but the homes, every one of the developments there that have these trees have damage that will cost thousands of dollars to repair. And also, we have an issue with safety because it's just a matter of time before somebody falls on these sidewalks. And then, of course, the homeowners, the city would be in trouble. And we are looking for some relief or some assistance from the city to resolve this problem. Thank you.
And Stephen Haverby, I'm a resident of Oregon City. I'd like to apologize to Chris Taylor, who moved all through all. Now involved in a firestorm for our neighborhood. And I really appreciate her friendship and her service. I thank David Frazier for his advice and his support. And Doug Neely for attending our meeting and showing the support of the city. I think Doug, if you could finish your part. If you could, Rob was there and I probably didn't turn around at the right time. It was good to see so many people there and it took such a firestorm to bring it about. So, thank you.
The two speakers are Patty Eddy and Kyle Bradfield.
Hi, Patty Eddy, Oregon City resident, homeowner and downtown business owner. And I'm here again because of my passion about the Rivers Project. And I'm going to again do the read since I don't do public speaking. First off, I would like to take objection to the statement made at the last meeting that the urban renewal subsidy should not be put to the vote because OC residents cannot understand urban renewal tax increment subsidy. They do not care. I have brought working at Rivers Tax Increment Report Chart that I designed based on city documents that clearly points out the basic system. This flowchart will require about an eighth grade level of understanding to process. And from the U.S. Census, eighty-six point two percent of OC residents have a high school degree. So I think that a refraction of that statement in the very least is an order, although I don't think that person is actually here. And given the level of debate about the entire project, I think that demonstrates that a vote would be appropriate on that project. With that thought, I am here tonight in effort to inspire the council to reject this notion of instant gratification that's building a mall with mega retailers and bringing us a solution to longstanding economic problems and encourage you to charter in the course of development. It is apparent that the intent of the developer is to simulate a type of artificial historical mean street type of port mall, bringing with it all the concurrificia of business model practices as well as the environmental and socio-economical impact concerns that mega retailers bring. Why on earth will we do that when we already have the real deal undergoing revitalization at a rapid pace? With city support and backing, the very core of Oregon City, including downtown, the shopping center, as well as the Hill, have tremendous potential to become a beautiful, robust, thriving, culturally and historically rich retail business district. In one week, our restaurant alone brought in more than two thousand people from OC and many outlined areas. Our business has grown every year since opening. And in the past two years alone, there have been more than thirty-two new businesses downtown as well as a growing farmer's market. People are beginning to flock downtown and the support of the community is overwhelming. This promotes an increase in self-reliance, where the majority of the money spent stays here and contributes to further growth. The possibility of a riverfront tie-in with the downtown area is a gem of enormous potential. There is very conclusive evidence that big box malls actually destroy more jobs than they create by eliminating not only local small businesses, but manufacturing jobs as well. Please consider giving us the opportunity to take responsibility for the community in which we live, not just by eating consumers, but also workers, producers, citizens, business owners and stewards of our community. Why not start with using urban renewal money to build a low-impact parking structure, launch local business alliances, finance local business development in a net policy that supports independent businesses, providing more job opportunities and building a healthier community with improved quality of life? Thank you for listening.
Hello, I'm Kyle Bradfield. I'm not a Oregon City resident, but I am a downtown business owner. I too am a opponent of the Rivers Project, particularly of the Rivers Project. My own personal belief is, you know, big chain stores hurt local businesses and communities based on those local businesses. I understand there's a, you know, people are saying this project will bring people to this area, which will help develop local businesses, urban renewal funds, etc. Their example was, of course, the Gresham Station Project, which is brought by a very same developer. Just go to Gresham and you'll see. So I did. And I brought Rob Proctor with me. And we went to Gresham, we talked to local business owners. We were hard pressed to find a single local business that was actually open during that time. Lots of buildings, lots of storefronts, very few that were open during that time. To me, logically, this says that there was obviously a turnover in business. Most of the businesses that we talked to were open five years, five and a half years, which is roughly two years after this Gresham station was built. Big turnover in business down there. Couldn't find a whole lot of business owners to talk to in general. Got stone wall and every turn at the same. So as we were leaving, I went to a real estate, local real estate office there and grabbed this Gresham map. This business is the Wabbea, this business is, so I started calling. Started talking with, working my way down, called twenty businesses, restaurants and storefronts mostly. Of those businesses, three had positive things to say about the Gresham station. Of this, out of these businesses, twenty businesses now, three were open during that time. I can't stress enough how much this project threatens businesses that are here and doing well now. That how your neighbors, your friends, your family, that might employ your neighbor's friends and family. I've got twenty employees. How many businesses down there have other employees? Fifteen employees. Fifteen hundred employees is the promise. Fifteen hundred jobs is the promise. At what sacrifice? That's all I have. Thank you. Take care.
The speakers are William Diford and Carter Stein.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is William Diford and I live in Oregon City. I want to express my extreme condolences and sincere condolences for those, so those coworkers at Blue Heron. I think it's a significant impact. As you all are aware, the financial impact is part of it. The emotional and societal impact, I think, is going to be felt for many, many years. And I certainly hope that this really tragic incident is going to build a fire under the creation of more shops in Oregon City. The best shop in the city we have right now, of course, is the Rivers. I understand that there's pros and cons on both sides of that. And intelligent people can agree to disagree. But I think that the importance of knowing our community, meaning our city, and providing jobs is, has to be our number one priority. Thank you very much.
I'm Carter Stein, Park Place resident of Oregon City. First, just want to appreciate Stephen Haverby for his apologies tonight. I'm here to comment on the community meeting that was held in Park Place last Monday. The purpose of PPNA is to promote and coordinate communication among its members for the purpose of maximum citizen participation in accordance with PPNA bylaws and Oregon Goal One objectives. The bylaws have provided an operating framework for PPNA through many contentious initiatives, including the Park Place Concept Plan, connections, and many development proposals. Monday's meeting was not authorized by PPNA, but it was promoted and advertised by the city as a PPNA meeting. My neighbors who attended the meeting called it a setup. I heard that PPNA residents were intimidated and harassed by people from outside the neighborhood, subjected to uncivil questioning, taunts, and cameras taking their pictures, which is a serious departure from normal proceedings in contrary to our values. When this meeting was reported as unauthorized, the city should have acknowledged the mistake and either canceled the meeting or redirected its venue from being a PPNA meeting to a community meeting. Would McLaughlin or any other neighborhood association have tolerated such an intrusion and a deception? I was deeply disappointed that the city tacitly supported these unauthorized activities and expenditures. In order to distance myself from that corruption, I resigned my officer position with the PPNA. I remain a steering committee member because I still believe the value of PPNA was purpose. I applaud PPNA Chair Tom Guile for stepping up after the former PPNA Chair also resigned from my way. Tom demonstrated a tremendous amount of courage and poise under intense pressure and false word to persevere with truth and fairness. Thank goodness he was able to stand his ground and David Frazier backed and supported his approach only hours before the meeting. I support commerce and growth in Oregon City. I've worked with the best downtown business volunteers with the Main Street Oregon City Design, Planning, and Preservation Committee. While I have no position with prospective rivers, Park Place residents have serious questions about using public debt to subsidize corporate profit. They want to know how the rivers would not displace existing businesses and jobs and why the landfill that served the metropolitan region and all of Blackwater County should potentially become a liability for Oregon City taxpayers. I ask for your support in restoring the purpose of PPNA and all the neighborhood associations to maximize citizen involvement from all sides. I ask the city to evaluate the roles and relationships between neighborhood associations and the CIC. There seems to be some superordinate and subordinate relationship now between the CIC and neighborhood associations. And I don't think that's healthy. It seems the CIC may have been used to undermine the legitimacy of PPNA and its working norms. I ask that you demand more civility and honesty from the city and its consultants by promoting inclusive conversations and providing all the facts in a transparent way that spread to all citizens rather than a few private interests. Thank you for your consideration and thank you for your public service.
The last three speakers are Paul Edgar, Gee Spirit Hawk, and Tom Guile.
My name is Paul Edgar. I'm from the Canadian Neighborhood Association. All I'm speaking as a citizen. Recently, I provided to the city manager a letter and transmission listing off that the city holds two hundred and fifty-eight individual pieces of property with separate tax IDs. Many of these properties may not necessarily be needed in today's market. If they're not needed, if there's not a business plan, a real asset plan, on the reasons to hold ownership of these properties, why are we continuing to hold them? Maybe a lot of these properties may be just little segments of property or properties next to some house. But if those properties were released, maybe legal creates an economic activity if there's no real purpose for holding them. I think it's important that the city commission take an active step to honestly review all of these properties, come up with an asset management plan, review, and then make a decision whether or not it is of value to the city to retain them. I'm submitting this list of properties and the letter that I gave to David Frazier.
And more, this last system is a trick.
I'm your late commissioners. My name is Gee Spirit Hawk. I'm a resident of Oregon City now, I'm almost term loss. I'm glad being here. I come to you today as a private citizen. And it was not my intent to speak tonight, but in hearing two other people that have trailed in at the end of a very heated discussion last commission session, I'm here to remind the commission that the majority of people that spent their long evening here with you last month, are the majority of the voice of the people. And I'm here to remind you, this is in conjunction with the positive pushing forward and encouraging for the Rivers Project. And I'm here to remind you that the majority of the voice of the people were heard very loud and clear. And I will hold you accountable, myself as a private citizen. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tom Guile, I'm a resident of Oregon City. And apparently newly recognized Chair of Park Place Neighborhood Association. I should have a skill set just to pop off the cuff, but I want to make sure my words are really clear so I wrote them down. You never know who's listening or recording. So, I thought I wanted to thank the weatherman who gave us the eighteen-degree temperature and the cold rain and snow over the weekend, or that firestorm in Park Place made it drink the whole place down. I'm glad there was some cold weather. For those who are listening tonight on the community television who are unaware, the Park Place Neighborhood is one of several neighborhoods that make up a Citizens Involvement Council. We meet the first Mondays of the month and our CIC meetings are available on the city website. I'm here tonight because of some situations that occurred this past week in the Park Place Neighborhood Association area. The details of the events are not as important this evening as the results. I'd like to publicly thank city manager David Frazier. You're getting your kudos tonight. Publicly thank city manager David Frazier for his calmness and guiding me as to how to handle an awkward situation with a transfer of leadership in our neighborhood association. His support made a tremendous difference in my ability to go about holding a community meeting. I'd also like to state my appreciation for other city staff who were present at this community meeting, including Nancy Ives, Chris Taylor, Dan Drinlaw, amongst some others. Also, thanks to Mayor Neely and Commissioner Kathy Rock for their presence. Most residents of that area showed up unaware of what was transpiring behind the scenes. And for most of them, those details are not as important as what took place. We had a guest speaker, Mr. Fred Bruny of Center Cow, the developer of the Rivers, followed by Mr. Dan Grogan of the Fisherman's Marine and Outdoor. The forty to fifty people who showed up treated the speakers, as well as each other, with the utmost respect. We learned more about the concept and vision of Mr. Fred Bruny, from Mr. Fred Bruny about the Rivers and of Mr. Grogan's concerns than through all the previous urban renewal and city council meetings. There was no grandstanding, there was no applause, and no emotional editorials, just the facts. My hope, excuse me, for that, I'm proud of our Park Place Neighborhood residents and others in attendance on this past Monday evening. It was really informative. My hope is that there will be more meetings of this nature across the city in all neighborhoods, informational and with large attendance. Neighborhood Association meetings are one of the best ways to learn about what is going on, not only in your direct neighborhood, but across the city. Your neighborhood representatives meet to hear your concerns and in turn relate those to city leadership. The process is critical to good communications for all of Oregon City. In closing, I again call those who attended our meeting and I invite anyone here or anyone listening to attend our Open Citizens Involvement Council meeting next Monday night, March seventh, at seven P.M., here in the city hall chambers. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you very much for the way you handled Monday night. I appreciate it. It was very courageous in stepping up into that situation. I had a discussion tonight about cameras and I'm just wondering what the issue was with... Okay, is that typical of Portland Falls Television? And what was it about this meeting that engendered Portland Falls Television to appear at that meeting? I mean, was that stated wide from any of their representatives?
Yes, when Portland Falls Television was there, Dan Holiday recorded a portion of the event that was Mr. Bruny. I didn't see him record the rest of our meeting, which was the business, which was greed, because the presentations did go on. We gave Mr. Bruny twenty-five minutes to talk, and we gave the citizens twenty-five minutes to ask questions. And then Mr. Grogan stood up for about five to ten minutes with questions, so I believe there's no questions. I think at that point, Mr. Holiday stopped the television because I saw him breaking down his equipment. So it was just mainly, I think, the informational part.
Thank you.
I found since I was there, I don't know if you mentioned that, but I was extremely civil. I didn't pick up anything otherwise. I hear a nod from... Yeah, it was very civil. Well, thank you. Okay. We're going to go on to the swearing and taking the oath of a reserve officer. Some portal?
I'd love to introduce Cody Ringham to everybody in attendance. Cody is our newest reserve police officer, and reserve police officers perform a very important function to the community and to the police department. They basically work for free. They attend an academy, which is very similar to what the regular officers attend. However, they do it at nights after they usually work a full-time job and on the weekends, and will come out and volunteer their time in the community to help supplement our police department. And they work at events like the Teddy Bear Parade, the Antique Fair. They ride along with officers who provide support during that time, so. Cody went to the Clark County or the Clark County Center H C Reserve Academy from September until February and graduated. He is a graduate of Portland Community College. He has an associate of arts degree from there. And during the day, he worked for Rastmus and BMW. So anyway, Cody Ringham.
Thank you. This is a, I really enjoyed this opportunity. I also appreciate, I don't know if the city recorded, she put it all down, I think, in part twenties, so I can remember. So let me go ahead and give you the oath. I'll say something and with the, well, I'm gonna say, repeat after me.
Repeat after me.
I, say your name.
I, Cody Ringham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the law.
That I will uphold the law.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the State of Oregon.
Of the United States and the State of Oregon.
I will abide by.
I will abide by.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department's rules and regulations.
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties.
While faithfully performing my duties.
As a reserve police officer.
As a reserve police officer.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you. Okay. As from the adoption of the agenda, is there any ordering or is there anything that, particularly from the consent agenda, that anybody wants to call? Worrying none, we'll proceed. And the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Right here, second. Ball?
Commissioner Nacida.
Aye.
Commissioner Mom.
Aye.
Commissioner Rock.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Neely.
Aye. Most of the rest of the meeting actually is proceeding on our general business, which is actually our goal climbing. You have a facilitator. I'm going to ask her to introduce herself to us if you would.
Glad to be here with you this evening. I'm Arden Prost, and I work as chairperson of the decisions specialists. Doing this kind of work, facilitation of groups of commissioners, city councils. Thank you. Working with commissions, city councils, county board commissioners, and so on, as they deliberate and try and fulfill their role that they've been elected to do.
There are certain goals that we've at this point adopted, but there's several that we have listed here that we're going to go through. I will say I did send out a memorandum to the commission asking them to, among the goals that we have remaining, if they could prioritize their top five, their next five, and so on down until they felt that they don't want to prioritize anymore. So there are, and I also made a suggestion to take a look at those goals and see if some of them can be combined. Some of them, I thought, appeared to be tasks that could be done under specific goals. And with that, I'll let you proceed.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
It seemed to me that it might be useful if we just briefly took a look at the memo that Joe sent you, where I thought, I thought he was very clear and articulate about saying you essentially have two roles, two tasks in front of you this evening. One is, is you spent two sessions doing some really, really intense work on coming up with the goals that have been articulated. Is to see just whether or not those are the ones that you, that you want to work towards. And then looking at the additional suggested ones, as Mayor Neely said, to see where those should be folded in and which ones you might want to drop, what tasks or activities of the goals that you have been working with. So it's such difficulty, and I say difficulty only because you've got so many different things that you want to do. So first, saying that the material that you've got in terms of the table of goals, is this where you think you want to go? And then to take a look at the additional ones that have been suggested to see to do, which ones do you want to include, and if so, because the metaphor is to use without a full wagon, what are you going to take off of your wagon in order to put something else on? So is that, is that agreeable? So why don't we just open up to looking at the goals that were part of the work plan, goals, priorities, and work plan, the draft that was revised February twenty-fourth, and see what discussion there might be about that and what agreement there might be in terms of those particular goals before we move on to looking at the additional suggested goals. Anyone who would like to open that up?
Mr. Mayor? One thing I want to mention is since we had our last session, as we all know, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, the twenty-three-acre challenge, however you want to put it, the Blue Heron situation has the fall on the city and now it's sort of a time-sensitive issue in some ways. In other ways, it's a very, very long-term effort. And I'm concerned about us having the resources and the staff time and the focus to develop, to create a sustained effort. Because I do think it's going to take, it may be several dozen trips to Salem. It may be one or two. It's going to take a lot of investigation, a lot of work, and I'm concerned about, now that we know that that's upon us, do we want to look at that and maybe put it in your primary goals that have already been agreed upon? And if so, there might be a way, for example, to narrow your focus. One of the things I saw in here was your charter, and we talked about the water rewrite, that provision of the water rate rollback as a mandatory thing that we have to do. But you might want to ask yourself how time-sensitive the rest of that work in the charter is compared to the Blue Heron situation and make a little room to put Blue Heron on the list. So I just want to kind of throw the Blue Heron thing out next and see where it went.
Yeah, I have a response to that. One, I do think that the Blue Heron issue should be one of our primary goals. I don't want to jettison the charter annexation or the charter amendment process yet. I'm currently scheduled, as is Mayor Neely, to appear before the CIC this coming Monday, and I'm preparing a presentation regarding that. And I wanted to get feedback from the CIC regarding that issue before the CIC has had a chance to weigh in on it. I don't want to make any decisions on that yet.
But I wanted to just point out to people that are here, what we're really talking about is some revisions to the current charter. And that's what we're talking about at this point. Is that right?
Well, we have review current charter and reestablished the charter review committee.
Yes.
And that's what I'm going to be discussing on Monday.
Yes.
So what I'm hearing is maybe we can go ahead and add language like investigate the potential redevelopment efforts for Blue Heron Millsite.
Yes.
We could add that to primary goals. Under, gosh, it fits a lot. I don't know where you want to put it. You guys have a thought on that?
To some degrees, sustainability.
Livability.
Livability, sustainability.
Have one thing there. That's a great place for it. And keeping with what Commissioner Nacida said, and you know, I understand not wanting to jettison it. Maybe we could, if the commission's amenable of this, we could at least, on the milestones language, we could put in there an acknowledgement that we, it will require some sort of outside, some additional staff capacity that we don't currently know where we're going to get. You know, it's like, it's like, Arden just said, if we're going to put something on the wagon, but we're not willing to take anything out, then I think we need to acknowledge that there's the wagon. You know, I just am nervous about overcommitting because I know that we don't have the capacity, so we will have to pick. Maybe we have a longer timeline, for example, to do it or work on it.
Yeah, I have another comment about making room for the Blue Heron site. This may, even if it's possible, require some kind of waiver from Metro. But as much as we have focused on our area within the city, I just don't see the wisdom of devoting staff time when we have something like the Blue Heron project to either the Beaver Creek Concept Plan or the South End Concept Planning Process. That is so nebulous leading the future, and we have such a heavy leading task to address what we have within the city limits that I, it just seems so attenuated and speculative to focus on the outer areas of the city, some of which are even beyond the city limits at that point. And I get, I don't know how...
Is Ed still here?
Okay. I don't know whether Tony and Ed can advise us as to, you know, how much we're under Metro's leash regarding that, but I just don't see, you know, as far as priorities, including those as priorities for this year.
I would say that we're not under Metro's leash at all. I mean, the concept plans have been approved. It's, the issues, annexations have become before us, and they generally fail. I think, I think basically, and I'm going to, as Mr. Drenel, the area, that area was put forward in the comprehensive plan as basically a mixed-use area should the industry disappear. Is that correct? Blue Heron Site. I would say, I don't think they're the same thing. I mean, the master plans are done. We still have some job lands, and I don't have any, I don't have any particular concerns about addressing issues in the Park Place neighborhood, but I think there should still be a dialogue between the college, ourselves, and the school district in terms of the jobs lands that are right around that area. I think we can initiate those. It still can be part of a longer-term goal, but I think they can be initiated. But I do agree with you. I think we should give priority to Blue Heron at this point. So I don't want to call involved potential development in other areas in the process.
What about South End? I'm sorry.
Beaver Creek Concept Plan, I think what was in there was looking at making a shovel ready for industrial uses. It was on the work plan, I believe. Where that falls off, that's up to you. This is, we have been working with Metro to amend the 2040 map to address the outstanding appeal on the Beaver Creek Concept Plan. Right now, Metro has recommended changing the 2040 plan. DLCD is reviewing that right now. If DLCD moves forward and approves that, and there are no appeals, or once those appeals are finalized, we will bring that back for adoption. We need, we are under special requirements. I think we had five years to adopt concept plans in all these areas. So I guess I would just separate those two issues. You know, if you want to drop what Mr. Trentlaw was bringing forward, that's fine. I'm just letting you know that we will continue to work forward on the other front. Concerning the South End Concept Land, we have not done a concept plan for South End yet. We have roughly three hundred thousand dollars in construction excise tax money. We are non-compliant right now. We keep pushing this off year after year after year. At some point, we need to do the concept plan in South End. So that's one component of not being compliant with the Metro requirement to have those UGV lands, concept plans done for them. The other component is that I am utilizing seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars of that construction excise tax to fund my budget, which is severely stressed at the moment. So if we do drop that, I will be dropping those funds from my revenue estimates.
I guess that, if I may, I guess that's where I have a question about the construction excise tax. Is the legislation or the ordinance regarding the construction excise tax so strict that it doesn't provide for contingencies such as the one we're facing now? Would the construction excise tax allow us to transfer that three hundred thousand to, for example, planning for the future of the Blue Heron Site, which is, to me, a significant priority, whereas, you know, the South Est Concept Plan doesn't seem to be that much of a priority?
I don't think it would either. And I believe, hasn't the Home Builders Association challenged some use of construction excise tax on inner-city development? New lands that were bought into the urban growth boundary. The construction excise tax was set up to set up a funding source so that local jurisdictions could do the concept planning in these urban growth... so that local jurisdictions could do the concept planning in these urban growth boundary areas so that they weren't brought into the UGB and held as future urban, which is the county holding designation indefinitely. So that was the deal made when we did that. I know Metro has, I think, I forget which jurisdiction it was, tried to use some of the construction excise tax for non-UGB, not, the lands that were not brought in as part of the UGB process and they're being challenged on that.
Yes, I know. I think there are more pieces in Blue Heron Site that we probably have to go through before we know, we know anything that we can do there. And I don't, I think that, I think that needs to be a priority to actually establish a, the ability to go in there and make some decisions regarding it. But there's a whole lot of steps that are going to proceed in the process before, even at that point. And I sure would not want to, sure, development opportunities that might exist in other areas fall by the way just because we're going through that process. So I, I think, you know, I think it would suggest that we look at things, whether they were one-year goals or two-year goals. I think that, that probably that Blue Heron Site is going to end up being a two-year goal because of a lot of the time things. And I noticed that our attorney is agreeing with me, which is good.
Mayor, if I might be, let me see if I can try to set a stage for what I believe is going to be the magnitude of the Blue Heron Challenge. And I say this with some perspective, having worked on a $100 million super fund site in Wisconsin when I was the manager there. I believe that the site of, this site could consume all of my time, 40 hours a week plus, for the next six months, two additional staff, a lawyer or two, and a couple consultants. I believe that's how big it is. I'm hoping that we can get sort of a timeout that we talked about in another meeting. Because if we can, I think that'll buy us some time to get our heads around this and really develop a plan that will work. What I'm really worried about is the first five or six months in dependency of that period between now and the time that we might get the timeout, I call it. I don't feel like I can not focus on that. Because it's, our options are going to be largely, I think, qualified within the first six months or so from now. And so I believe that thing is very time-sensitive. And because of that, I'm nervous about putting the necessary time in there to be successful. And then looking at the rest of the goals a year from now, and you guys usually say, Dave, how'd you progress on this and this? And I mean, it's, it could be easier than I think. But I'm trying to be realistic about how big a scope that project will be to try to get our arms around.
So you're really saying, what else can I take off?
And I've looked at this, you know, I'm looking at this, that's why, and I really appreciate Jim saying, well, maybe this could come off and that could come off. Because some of these will be guided, as we always know, by opportunity. So we may pursue one of these avenues and say, you know, the opportunity isn't there. Tony has got a very valid point about not forfeiting these funds. So I think that is something we need, we need to follow up on. I would just encourage us to look at these things and say, how many of these are not time-sensitive and are not optional? The water rollback is not optional. We have to do it. But if there are anything else on here that is sort of optional, that would, that would free up my time. I'm worried about my time on that charter thing, especially because I know what it, I know what it takes.
I have a suggestion regarding Goal One and the priority we have about the Cohabitat Task Force. Given the changes that we've had surrounding the breadth of it, the staff, the staff requirements, I'd like to substitute something for that that's much narrower. And Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of directing this to you in particular because of your appointment powers regarding the Natural Resources Committee and that you and I were the one that wrote that memo regarding the task force. That, the Habitat issue is broad. The co-project is, is not proceeding at the moment. The developers have through October to get financing. We don't know if that's going to happen. So perhaps the impetus or the necessity for the broad view task force, given other priorities, isn't there right now. But I would like to consider substituting from the additional priorities list just the issue of the peninsula as opposed to a wider Habitat study. Because I do think that peninsula is also an exigency. If it fails, and I drive across that bridge every day, and I really think it's an exigency at this point, the way it's eroding, and if it were to fail, what that would do for, you know, the public health and our development objectives. Since the Habitat Task Force is quite broad, given what we're facing this year, perhaps that's too much to bite off this year. But I could see something very bounded and manageable to just have perhaps the reactivation of the Natural Resources Committee and focus only on the, what to do about the peninsula.
And does it, does it your sense that by focusing more tightly on Goal Number One and the milestones under that, that that would free up enough of staff time to deal with Blue Heron?
No, all I'm saying is that it would, it would, it would require less staff time and resources than the entire Habitat Task Force.
So it would give you a little bit more leeway. We still need to look at other, right? Still need to look at other things to take out, but that might, and so Commissioner Smith, want to speak to that? I saw you nodding.
Well, I agree with that. And I also, in terms of the three, Beaver Creek, South End, and Blue Heron, I think South End falls at the end of the list at this point. So I agree with the comments on that as well. But as far as anything else to cut off this list, it's going to be very hard.
And if you let me cast you by a comment, I'd really like to hear from Commissioner Mom and Commissioner Law.
Well, I, I'm looking at these, just these two goals, okay, that we're talking about, okay? And I'm looking at downtown. I think that one, I mean, we either have it or we don't. Is that right? Is this for sure?
So the question is, will that take any more staff time?
Yeah.
After it's adopted? And the answer to that is yes. It's not going to take a lot more staff, staff time. You might also want to keep in mind that it's nice to have some things on here you actually think you have a shot at getting done.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think you have a really good shot at finishing that one. But after it's done, there is some coordination that has to happen among, between the staff and Main Street. There's probably some program changes because when people vote to tax themselves, they expect a little bit more service.
Okay.
And I want to make sure they get that.
Okay.
I do have a suggestion though, but I want to defer to Commissioner Mom or Commissioner Watson, let her weigh in before I suggest. I have something to kind of dovetail off what Commissioner Nocia said.
Go ahead. Okay. Well, I agree also that the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, the Beaver Creek Hamlet, and South End should drop, drop off or way down to the bottom of the list of goals. And also agree that the co-project, we should scale way back to something much more manageable to conserve staff. I do have a question about making the Beaver Creek Concept Plan shovel-ready. What, where is that process right now and how much more will it require?
So to be considered shovel-ready by the state for industrial land, you have to have infrastructure in so that pretty much you can just come in with the development and build. So that, that's the difficult part. That's, that's a very large investment to be able to put in the water, the sewer, the streets, the sidewalks, the lights, have to make that shovel-ready.
And the bigger part, the biggest hurdle is the annexation and zoning.
So it seems to me at this point that we're not at either one of those stages?
No, there's a lot.
We, we still have to get the Beaver Creek Concept Plan approved. So that it was approved through the City Commission, it was appealed to Luba Luba, remanded it. We've been working with Metro. So we still have quite a bit of work to get through that process. Once we do get through that process, however long that may take, bringing back to the commission, re-adopting findings, if there's an appeal process, we've worked the appeal process. Once that's finished, we then need to go back and write the Beaver Creek Concept Plan zoning code. So right now, it would just be the comprehensive plan that's being adopted. We need to come back again. So yes, that is out there with us.
It makes, it's more in the long term.
Right. And so what I'm seeing is we have another area that has the infrastructure already in it.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Shovel-ready, board-ready.
Exactly. And so it only makes sense to me that that would come right up to the top and these other ones would either fall off or fall way down to the bottom.
Going back to the South End, however, you, you say there are funds available to do it. I'm simply going back to my experience because I served on the Beaver Creek Concept Plan Committee. That, I never saw the city manager there. I mean, it didn't involve the city manager. And I, to me, to some extent, what we're talking about here at Blue Heron, we're probably not doing much planning at this point. And we've talked about a lot, having to do a lot of things to get ourselves to the point that we can do some planning there. I imagine, first of all, if the funds are available and we, you, if those funds aren't utilized, you may not have a staff person to deal with that. Is that, is that a problem?
We, you know, we need to make some, some hard decisions as we're moving forward, yes. I have the capacity with my staff, based on the level of development, to work on this concept plan and I have the funding available through Metro.
So I would suggest that we go ahead and move with the concept plan for South End.
Let me just back up a moment. I saw a lot of nods, but I just wanted to assure that I really correctly got Commissioner Nocia's recommendation to tightly focus on the Cohabitat Task Force. For all of you who are doing it now, because I certainly isn't trying to free up enough time, but it's a start.
Let me ask a clarifying question, if I might. So the scope is to address the erosion on the peninsula at the Cove. Do you folks believe that that requires, because that is a project. I mean, we can capitalize that and try to do it with or without a reactivation of a, of a large committee. And that would address the urgency that's there. And then you can consider reactivating your committee later. I'm not sure if that's where you're going, Jim, but.
That doesn't mean, my question is, well, I mean, we're going to end up bringing in a consultant, OTAC, or whoever it is to do the bank stabilization project.
I'm jumping ahead to the list of additional priorities. I don't want to preclude re-establishing the Natural Resources Committee because based especially on the presentations tonight by Mayor Williams and Mr. Stewart, I think that tasks of the tree ordinance and the problems is one that is on many citizens' minds and that we need to address it. And that the Natural Resources Committee is also the venue to do that as well.
Well, you already have on your goal list here an 18-month exploration of the Parks and Open Space Utility Fee. And that fee was actually intended to partly fund addressing the problem that those gentlemen raised tonight. So that is, you do have something on your goals that's directed to that, to that problem.
Okay, the language. I didn't get that from the language.
What story are you talking about?
How would you, how would you clarify that in the language? Is, it's something that you're, you're saying this is, this would.
Well, if you look under Goal Six, where it says, begin 18-month process of exploration so that possible measures could be submitted to the vote of people after annexation pledge terminates. The Parks and Open Space Utility Fee, to address the problem those gentlemen spoke about today, we don't have a funded resource to do that. However, to push your mind at ease a little bit, one of the things I was taking notes on when they were speaking was that we would be, I'm going to ask Tony Conkle to bring back a report to the commission to give you some of the history on that. Because the history on that is pretty instructive about how the situation was created. But the good news, so the bad news is, yes, there's a problem. And the city even had some involvement in it. The good news is, the problem isn't getting any worse because a prior commission, before I was here, fixed the problem. Fixed the problem from getting worse, prevented it from recurring in the future. But it still means you do have an issue there. And I'm hoping to have a funding source where we can come up with some creative, you know, they make those flexible sidewalk panels out of latex and different ways that we can try to look at addressing some of the issues there. So that, anyway, it's, there's something on your plan for it. It's wrapped around that, yeah.
With that said, I'm still very reluctant to abandon the Natural Resources Committee reinstatement as one of the goals because it is something that is called for in ordinance. And I think it can play a role, can a significant role in addressing the problem of the Cove of Metro.
The other, the other thing, I don't think we're combining ourselves in looking at the tree ordinance only in terms of street trees. We have this issue where we're removing trees, we don't have replacements, and I don't think we have set a plan of doing so. So I'm going to agree with Commissioner Nocia. I think the tree ordinance is, as you said, broader than the street trees.
I agree with that.
So someone clarified then.
Yeah.
What is the stat you would you have in mind in terms of reducing the resources needed for Goal Number One? Because a lot of people, a lot of the SGS, it's good to reduce air resources, reduce the scope of this number. On Goal Number One, would that be a part of that?
Yes, thank you. I'd like an answer to that too. Because the Natural Resources Committee, if you look under Goal Five, that's one of the active, reactivating committees that we want to do. So it's actually two separate issues in my mind. So are we wanting the staff to get a consultant to go out and look at the peninsula and, peninsula and kind of figure out how to shore that? Or is that, I don't?
I think the, the answer to that question is we don't know. We don't know. And, and I think it would be the charge, or one of the charges of the Natural Resources Committee to provide an answer to that question. We don't know what it's going to cost to, to address the peninsula. We don't know technically what's required. So to make that determination on costs and expertise now, it's, it's an unanswered question, I think.
I'd also like to suggest that possibly the, the Blue Heron Site has a natural resource component to it that would be addressed under this committee also.
So then can we take off the Cove Habitat or put it on a subcommittee under the Natural Resources? Because we don't have the answer to that. So will we re-establish the committee to kind of look at that, I guess, right?
What was, what my suggestion was, was taking off the whole Cohabitat Task Force completely.
Okay.
Because it's too broad and replacing it with the narrow project of addressing the failing and the erosion problems of the Cove Peninsula.
And that was going to go through the Natural Resource Committee?
Yeah.
So it would be like a sub, you would have your committee and then you would ask them to go look at this and bring back recommendations?
I, I don't know if I'd put it underneath it. I, you know, what's there on Goal One, I think, is fine with the replacement in the cell on the left-hand side of the task force with the addressing of the peninsula failure.
So Jim, is the peninsula failure the milestone?
No, it's priority.
Okay. And the committee is the milestone, that the resource committee?
One of the milestones.
Okay.
I would suggest that, that probably is the milestone. I think the tree ordinance can go under it, I think potentially. So I think what you're looking at is task four of the Natural Resource Committee.
Yes.
I always say a formation of the Natural Resource Committee. These other things become tasks that they'll be looking at.
Yes. And that's what I thought I was saying. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to request suggestions from our facilitator as well as from the commission. We do have a citizen that wants to make a comment, and I'm going to leave that decision to you as our goal setting question and how you want to incorporate citizen comments into this.
So if it's something that we should be considering in the decision-making process, as long as we, we still have opportunity for discussion, seems to be.
Okay.
If I could, just so I understand, concerning the natural resource and potentially these subcommittees to it, we have, with, with trees, we've had two issues. One is historic street trees, popping sidewalks. One is historic street trees, popping sidewalks, and I'm gonna provide you with what we've done since we initiated that in ninety-five, when we had smaller planar drifts with inappropriate trees, to what we have today. So, is that something that I'm gonna bring back to you, and then you're gonna decide if we need to move forward with additional research on that issue? And then the second part of that is, under our street and sidewalk section of our code, not our land use section, is where we get into the liability that the property owner is responsible for their frontage, even though it's in the public right of way, including the street tree and the sidewalk. So, you know, those are, while they're related, because usually it is the street tree that's causing the sidewalk, you can't have a sidewalk disrepair that's not caused by a tree. So, are you gonna waive those liabilities? So, those are, I'm not sure if I'm bringing that back to you in a memo, and then we're potentially taking this to the Natural Resource Committee. I mean, once you hear our explanation of what we've done, we may not need to do this. So, I'm wondering if you can leave this open-ended, or?
Well, you still put a task to the tree ordinance under the task, under the Natural Resource Committee. The only, the street trees are not the only thing that we were talking about.
Okay, and so then that was gonna be my second question about the tree ordinance. In August of last year, we just adopted brand-new tree ordinance standards for mitigation, replacement, protection. Are we revisiting that?
No, what I'm talking about is those trees that are in public lands have been cut down, where there has been no, you know.
Okay, so it's more publicly-owned properties? Okay. Is that what we're talking about?
Well, it's a major issue. I don't wanna preclude anything, but that is the major issue that we've been hearing about as commissioners.
But I guess, when I hear that, is that, when we take this back to the newly-formed Natural Resource Commission, we're not opening up tree permitting on private property throughout the city. We're focusing on.
Public land is the priority.
Public land is the priority, okay, all right, thank you.
City's the worst protector.
You have the first one, Andrew.
Yeah, you have the first one. You have the assistant to the city manager who wants to jump in too.
Because I'm gonna be the one trying to take all of your comments and put them together, yes. So, I just wanna make sure, in summary, am I flipping the milestone and the priorities? Your priority is the reactivation of NRC, and your milestones are the tree ordinance and the Cove Peninsula stabilization.
And, and, and?
And Blue Heron. Well, Blue Heron, do you want that under Natural Resources or is that a whole separate priority? That's a whole separate priority.
Well, it is part of that, too. And it was gonna go under a number of different, yeah, yeah. It falls in a number of different sizes.
Could I suggest making that Riverside Natural Resources?
You know, maybe I can offer a little clarification. I think that, I completely agree that the Blue Heron is an enormous natural resource. It's on a place that has to be studied, and we have to develop a management plan. But you know from our other discussion that we're pre, we could be a long way out, but before we need to make, if we put this on your list, you know, that's a very, if we could get that thing in our bailiwick and get all this done in six months and have the Natural Resources Committee working on it, we would not be living in the country I know. That could just be way, even in Libya, they could get this done in six months. So, I just, I agree with you, but I just think the timeline is a little unrealistic, so.
And so, your request is, what would it look like?
Well, I think that they've got the peninsula erosion and then the tree ordinance. The tree, I think it's actually, what you mean by tree ordinance is not tree ordinance, it's reforestation of public lands, right? That's really what you're looking at, a reforestation plan for public lands, as opposed to Tony saying, "Oh, gosh, I gotta run into the tree ordinance." Six months ago, right? Okay, thank you so much.
Is that clear for you?
Clear and on or off, that's all I need to know.
It's not on.
It's not under Natural Resources, but it's still a priority in Goal One. All right, we're gonna be looking as we make our parks and public lands as it comes out.
Okay.
Or be reduced, and that's for a few years.
No, no, we're not.
I'm asking Mr. Powers, is he specifically in Natural Resources?
Do you have your finger to the top of this?
Mr. Powers, when I make that argument, he is about the natural resource and trees. And we were talking about this issue when we were in the chap, bringing our wedding chapel forward. We're taking out some trees, we're replanting a ton of trees, most of them will fit on that site. So, we were working with the staff on where else can they go? Because there was a mission of lack of fund. If there are situations where, because tree removal is happening, and we have to replant, and if there's a list of public places where they can go, whether it be along Abernathy Creek or along some extreme corridors, or in other public areas, if that list is there, we'll supply the trees. The private sector should and would then supply the trees for that. So, maybe that's the way to get what we want then.
It must be part of the discussion, where the law can go.
Yeah, so if there's a priority list of that, we'd have to do it, so.
So, the question becomes, and if we want to add, can we look at how we add Blue Heron, and then look at how we would, what we would take out, reduce, in order to take Blue Heron feasible against staff resources? How would you frame a priority for Blue Heron? Does it belong under one of the existing goals?
Is that one under Goal Four?
We talked about putting it under Goal Four, for enhanced livability of the community. And the language that we discussed was to investigate potential redevelopment efforts for the Blue Heron Mill Site. And I'd like to suggest, and it sounds very speculative, but I'd like to suggest, perhaps as a milestone, that the commission receive regular reports from the city manager on the progress of that effort.
Comments about this suggestion? I think that's great.
The Natural Resources under Goal One?
Well, now we've taken it down to peninsula only.
Oh, no, yeah, but it was Goal One.
Yes.
So, thoughts about the suggestion without adding the Blue Heron under Goal Four?
I'm good with that. We just gotta find something else to pull off the wagon.
And clearly, in terms of milestones, at this point, feel comfortable with receiving regular reports, receiving more details and.
Correct.
Can we do some investigation, see exactly what the milestone is expected?
Yes.
So, now we're back to looking at what else can be added, completely taken off or significantly reduced?
Yes.
Well, I guess I'm always making suggestions here, but I wanna bring to your attention, under your Goal Five, where you have revitalized advisory committees?
Yes.
It's almost, I hate to say this, but I have a lot of plans for the mayor this year regarding the Blue Heron site. And I'm probably gonna have a lot of requests to some of you, because I do believe that there will be a time when our commissioners really have to be involved, even in meetings and lobby, perhaps lobbying and trips that we might have to go on to try to build the right kind of consortium to make that project a reality. And so, to that end, you may look at the time you're committed. I mean, this is really up to you folks, because the things you've committed to under Goal Five, you have three committees under there. You may actually ask yourselves, do all three of those rise to the current priority? Or do you wanna have one or two, or do you wanna have all three of them? Because it is gonna take time from each of you to activate those and to keep them going.
Well, I believe, I believe that we have two of our commissioners already working with the staffers in terms of the arts commission.
Well, if everything flows well, yes.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't wanna, I would say we could make that a two-year goal as opposed to a one-year goal.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But I would like to see that still.
Okay, what about your heritage one? I know the Natural Resources, we just talked about that staying on. Do you think your heritage one could wait a year before you bring that back?
It's further along than the.
It is, okay, all right.
It's further along in having a proposal.
Okay.
I feel that, you know, I don't feel that any of those drop off. I feel we've put them off for two years already.
We have commissioners that are willing to take that task on, so I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
I mean, it can progress, they may not, I'm.
Yeah.
We need to at least leave them on.
So, you might make a note that it may not be done this year, okay? Twenty twenty-two.
Do we need to consider how much time that's gonna take from staff?
Yes, yes.
Always, but I think, I think, though, if you put on your milestones there, you could say within, with a two-year timeframe?
Yes.
And that would give both the commissioners and the staff, I think, a more reasonable shot at success.
Okay.
Because that's, my guess is, I guess that still doesn't slow down the chicken today.
Yeah, but it doesn't remove anything, no.
Exactly, so.
Nope.
Any big suggestions for dropping something?
I see just going down the list of it.
Yes.
When I'm finding that.
Yeah.
Well, we've already dealt with, we've already looked at Goal Number One, and revised that. So, looking at Goal Number Two.
Well, we only have other things that have not yet been addressed on the Goal One?
Well, we're gonna start with two. We're gonna start there.
You're on the wrong page.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm, I need to do that.
We're still working on them. We're just trying, exactly, we're just trying to look at the goals that you've already agreed upon.
Right.
To see which might be significantly changed or even dropped in order to make room for Blue Heron.
Yeah.
And the reason we're doing this, as opposed to looking at the other thirty-one suggested parties, these are the ones that were at the top of all of yours.
Yes.
We wanna deal with these first, and then see if they, and now it's the Blue Heron. We don't, we'll see if we need to cut it.
Yeah.
Deal with Blue Heron before we can move on to the other ones.
Right.
So, Goal Number One, you're feeling satisfied with in terms of policy and focus, or potentially refocus, is that right? So, let's move on to looking at Goal Number Two. And you've got four, five different projects here, five different priorities.
First of all, the Beaver Creek Hamlet is a forty-year finalizing. It's just to initiate some discussions around the Beaver Creek. It's not, it can be struck as long as there's an understanding we're gonna be communicating with some people.
Yeah.
So, we're seeing it actually strike down Blue Heron?
Well, you can put it as a fully here at all.
So, you have.
No, the thing is, it's not, it's not land that is in our urban growth boundary. It's not land that will come in the near future, maybe more than, less than forty years, but it's in an urban reserve, and that's a forty- or fifty-year horizon for urban expansion. So, it's nothing that has to actually occur within a two-year goal period. It's just something that we're, when initiating some discussions of the Beaver Creek Hamlet about, and that's all here.
So, it sounds as though that's a little win, but it's pretty small.
Right, right, a little, little one.
But still, everything needs to be moved forward in the Cove project?
Well, those are things that are, and we have agreements in place. And another one, we've invited somebody to speak to us, and these are things that are in progress.
So, before the remaining, is there any place to decrease staff resources allocated against those?
Well, you could look at the economic development strategy.
Yeah.
I mean, the chamber's got something started, I think, with that.
I'd be opposed to dropping this as a priority, because of the economic climate within the strategy for family wage job creation. I think requires us to consider a very sophisticated economic development strategy, especially one that is consonant with what's happening at the state level with the Oregon Business Plan and its focus on clusters, and localizing our economy, for instance, through food security, with what we have around Oregon City and with energy security. I think, I think that's one needs to stay.
Other comments?
I would, I would agree. I think that in light of, you know, last week's developments, and everything, that it's extremely important that we can keep economic development strategy. And then as we listen to downtown business owners tonight speaking and things, I think there's no way that we can drop that one from our goals and keep our commitment to the people who elected us.
So, any of the thoughts on any of the parties under Goal Two, or do you think we should move into looking at Goal Three?
We'd already struck Beaver Creek shovel-ready, correct?
Yeah.
I have a request. It would help me if I could understand how much some of these projects are going to impact staff.
It's an economic development strategy, bud.
Is that the one?
The most paying for our bucks, you know, where we're going.
Exactly. Well, when the staff created its original list, those were things we thought we could do with the resources we had. And so, we just took an estimate, frankly. Our department heads got together, and we talked about each one of them and what would be required, and we came up with what we thought we could do in a given year. Some of our budget could be affected pretty severely by the Blue Heron closing, which means that we may lose capacity as a result of that. So, if we had to do that over, we would probably have a short list. If you look down below, do you have an example that you want me to specify? Okay. Yeah, how much they affect staff depend, really, does this project specific? It just depends on what project we're talking about.
So, I'm sort of inferring that if you were going to be looking at this list, to say what's a payoff that staff might suggest for Blue Heron?
Yeah.
That's a good question. What do you guys wanna cut off of it? We wanna make sure you're heard. I was just gonna speak to some of the committees. Some of the committees really take a lot more involvement than others. So, you know, I think the Heron Committee and the Arts Committee will take time, but it's not gonna be labor-intensive, whereas the Natural Resources Committee needing staff assistance or coordinating consultants and doing more research might just take a little more effort.
I'd like to listen to David and see what you, you know, just have to think about from this. Some economists argue that when you're in a recession, it's not the time to budget tighten. The old Keynesian, you know, in a recession, you gotta, you know, spend and create jobs, et cetera.
Right.
When we're faced with a contingency like Blue Heron's closing, even though it is going to lead to a decrease in tax and utility fee, franchise fee income, does it perhaps not require that we look to adding staff? It's the old Pennywise, on Bullock's argument, and even if, and, you know, and there's a budgeting process that we're gonna be going through, both on the Urban Renewal Budget Committee and the City Budget Committee, to figure out if we can make additional staff hires or transfer staff to address a lot of these contingencies like Blue Heron? I don't know what the Urban Renewal Budget, for example, would permit, given the flow, you know, in chip funds, whether there would be room in the Urban Renewal Budget for additional staff for economic development, for example. But I'm just wondering, from your perspective as a city manager, do, you know, times like this require, and there's the other thing, too, as far as the fire annexation pledge, I think we agreed that, you know, if five people voted, we could, we could, you know, add staff. And I'm just wondering what you think on that.
Well, you know, the real, the real challenge, Commissioner Lucida, is that most of the time when I hear that debate. Well, you know, the real, the real challenge, Commissioner Seeta, is that most of the time when I hear that debate occurring, it's at the federal level. And at the level we're working at, uh, we have a balanced budget requirement. So that really changes the game for local government, because we, we can't spend more than we can, uh, ever. We can borrow money, um, but it's pretty hard to go out and sell bonds to hire people to work here.
You have to take your vote with people.
Yeah, absolutely. There's no other wrinkle. So, you know, it's, it, it's a very interesting debate on a national level, but I think for, for us, what we will do though is look in our, our budgeted resources within the balanced requirement through this budgeting process we're getting ready to do and see, is there? We're, I'm concerned about us being able to continue to provide critical day-to-day services that people already rely on.
Yeah.
Um, and that's really, we're not talking about that. We're assuming that's going to continue. Uh, so I already know without you telling me, that's a priority. So the budget that you get from me will reflect that, but then the other things that you have money for, um, like property acquisition or capital projects, capital improvement, that money is more flexible, and that can be doled out to hire consultants, it could be doled out to create positions. But again, when you create a position, you're not building a project. So you don't want to eat up all of your capital, project money, on day-to-day operations, uh, or hiring staff, because then in the end, you don't have any money to do capital projects, and you really, you do need to do that. I think those capital projects is something that you should preserve when you're in an economic downturn, because those are the things that stimulate reinvestment. So that's why, again, Blue Heron is such a priority, because that could be an enormous economic driver for this community for the next hundred years if we don't goof it up somehow.
And then also, I'm looking at the kind of milestone, and it's talking about industrial clusters and this kind of thing. And is that something that you would see that we would partner with the county? So maybe could it, like, be less work for the city staff? If, if it's a, if it's something that's agricultural, it'd probably be outside of our limits, I guess? I don't know. So maybe it wouldn't be so much time for you, Terry? Dan? Oh, Dan's turn, that's good. I don't know. I'm just trying to lessen the time a little bit.
We could, uh, reallocate some of the consulting plans. We, we're not spending any money on consults right now. So there's that source. And just on the side, you know, the federal government issued money, and, and ATA four, actually, Oregon City issued the Beaver Coin, so.
Picking out the press.
There is an idea, I can't wait.
I think that's awesome.
Actually, let me, let me just ask the question that I asked you earlier. If staff were looking at this list, priority goals, um, of priorities, what would you suggest as a trade-off for the need, uh, for resources for Blue Heron?
So, very looking at me. Well, a, a tiny win, uh, would be, I would, I would go down at the bottom of goal three on the bottom of your first page. And there's absolutely no question that End of Oregon Trail and Ermiting, particularly Ermiting, I mean, this is, this is a crisis. So that stays. But I would probably look at the police station, because I realize that our recent remodeling down there and having talked to the chiefs, that realistically, that's probably two-year, you know, minimum two years out. And so I would look at, this was a one-year, two-year document, of probably, as exing that one off with the knowledge that we're going to have to bring it back. Because this year, I'm not sure what kind of resources that this department will be devoting to.
I'd like to ask Chief Conner a question about that. Every holiday with a survey done, um, and the conclusion from the survey was kind of, now's not, not the right time to go out for a bond. And do you foresee that attitude or that, that, that conclusion lasting through this year? So that you, as, as chief, are not concerned about setting this over, um, the police bond issue until next year?
I, I think it should wait until next year, to be honest. I don't think that, uh, the public attitude is going to change about that. I think as long as we're in a, a national recession, and we're having this type of economic conditions that, uh, it's pretty really hard to convince people to approve a, a bond measure to building a police department. So I, I, I think it's something we can put on the back burner, but, uh, obviously with a, with a caveat there, that at some point, this issue needs to be addressed because of the state requirement that all public, uh, safety buildings by twenty twenty-two have to meet seismic standards. So at some point, somewhere down the road, whether we do it now or kick the ball down the road, that, uh, the commission at some point is going to have to address that issue, so.
Small and, but addressing to, what's following the police station process after?
Yeah.
Yep.
What, what other, I realize in passing, what other areas could be, could be, could be.
Um, I. Who do you think knows? I'll defer to Commissioner Monk's decision.
And I'm, I'm wondering, do we have to put the water rate rollback on a goal? I mean, isn't that something we have to do? So can we, like, does it have to be on our goals?
Well, you've got it listed as a priority, and if you want to make sure it gets done, I would leave it, leave it there.
Okay. Even if it's not, this document, if it's going to get done, it's going to.
We're still in this.
Okay, all right.
Um, I always defer to Commissioner Smith on these matters, and I will tonight, um, but I will, I will pose a question to Commissioner Smith. Ermiting House, kind of to me, is like, um, the peninsula on the cove. I mean, it's just, you gotta address it, okay? Um, I'm just wondering though, for the End of the Oregon Trail Museum and Interpretative Center, to you, do you, do you treat that as equally as a contingency? Um, as far as something that would be done this year, what would your opinion be on? What should happen this year, because we don't have anything in the milestones regarding that? And is that something, given the contingency of Blue Heron, you could perceive setting back a year?
These are very tough ones. And, uh, I mean, if I put it on the list of the Ermiting House, which one comes first? It's such an emergency right now, with the house. I, I, I mean, my best feeling is that this, this thing, conversations we've had with the End of Or- about the End of Oregon Trail, we have no idea what we're going to do. I mean. So, no likelihood of it happening, even in this next year, even if we want to, I don't know how. Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, so basically, I was just talking about the Ermiting House and the End of Oregon Trail, and the Ermiting House is, is an emergency situation, um, that we're going to talk about next meeting, so we'll have more details on that, because I don't even know to what degree that is an emergency, but I know it's, it's critical. Um, I guess in my own mind, you know, even a lot of time we've talked about the End of Oregon Trail site, I don't know to what degree we, we have thought about it and really discussed it, and, you know, even that's going to take a year. I, I mean, I don't, I don't see us, that was, I think it is, it, you know, I, I want it to be on that list, but I don't want us to forget about it, because it's definitely a crucial, you know, all of our museum sites right now are really crucial, but I don't know how we're going to get it open in the next year. Um, it's a dialogue that some of the other museums are having together to try to work together and tackle too. I don't know. I don't know how to answer that, um.
How about if we started the End of the Oregon Trail, like, in twenty twelve, would that would be helpful?
I guess the question I had is, apparently there's still some structural integrity. Is there a way that we can guarantee that remains and that the, the vacancy of it, uh, doesn't result in additional?
Well, with the interpret, uh, the interpretive site, yeah, I don't know.
Without, without.
What do you think is hot? I mean, that's.
I'll just talk loud. I think it'll pick me up.
Okay.
We got one more here. I can't, I can't exactly answer that question, but, um, for the most part, what I can tell you is we've, you know, we've essentially mothballed the facility, which is kind of a generic term, but, um, the, there are, you know, we're, we're, we're running the, the heat and the ventilation at minimal levels, and we're keeping an eye on the facility. Uh, the, um, the visitor center is occupied, so we have a presence there, which is, which is actually good, you know, for things like vandalism and, and those types of issues. We are continuing to, um, maintain the grounds and the restrooms, and our staff do have a, a, at least a limited presence there, and I, I, I'm not, I'm not going to give you an absolute, um, yes, I feel great that it'll be okay for a year without doing a whole lot to it, but, but as issues, as, as we do with, with a lot of our facilities, we'll continue to monitor that, that facility until such time that decisions are made. Uh, we've already, we've already done this even since the, the operations have closed, where we've gone in and had to, um, do some maintenance items, you know, fix, fix, fix an HVAC system and a door that was not working right, whatever. So I guess what I can tell you, my, my best answer is that I can tell you that we're going to continue to monitor it. We understand the need to preserve as much as we can the integrity. I think one of the really big issues that in the, in the foreseeable future is, is, uh, potentially some roofing issues, which we're, we're going to continue to monitor, and, um, if it becomes so problematic that we need to address it beyond just some basic maintenance, we would, we would of course bring that, you know, I'd bring that forward through city manager. We decide how to present that to the commission, if resources were required beyond our, our level. So, you know, I know that's not a great answer, but it's, i- in essence, um, we're, we're.
I, I, I feel relatively comfortable saying that I, I think we can do our best to preserve the, the structural integrity.
As you know, we're, we're not, we're not well-staffed as, as a department of, you know, everything, including all building maintenance in the city and, and, uh, but we, we do keep an eye on that and will continue to do so. So, you know, that's, that's probably the best answer I can tell you.
Um, I guess, um, what, I mean, facilities in general is, is a huge concern, and so I guess, you know, we have certain facilities that we're not using because we can't use them, like the Ermiting House. We have certain facilities that are not being used because we don't know or have the means to, to, to have a use for it right now. And then we have some that are, um, like the, the train depot building. So I think, right now, for me, um, even in a temporary situation, we need to find uses for the buildings that we can use. And, and I, I mean, even, even for the Interpretative Center, um, you know, it may be a while before we decide it becomes a museum again or something else. But, you know, just sitting it there for a year or two bothers me, when it has the chance to be rented out for events or for, for something, um, and, you know, the Ampac Building, which we can, you know, start renting out. So I, I guess the buildings that are empty, um, if we can come up with even just a, a year plan to say, how can we utilize these buildings in some way, um, that maybe even brings in, um, a minimal revenue to at least help pay for, for the heat and the lights for the Interpretative Center, because we're not going to get a full solution for that for a while. And, you know, I know there's some things, some of the parts of the building that we wouldn't be able to use because of the equipment that's in there and things like that, but I think there's, you know, there might be community meetings, or there might be, you know, events or something when, you know, the Piner Center school that we could say, well, yeah, we could, we're going, we're going to hire staff to be somewhere in a city building, you know, why not hold, you know, think about it? I don't know. And I, I don't know that we've talked about that, but at least that's an idea of just to, so it's not completely just sitting there as a, as a, as a drain. Because I think it's going to be a while, uh, before we, we get to it.
And I noticed that actually, there's, there's a December two thousand eleven milestone, but there's nothing about what will be done.
Right.
And so, I, and I heard that the, with, with the Ermiting House, that, you know, that's a crisis, and so you apparently have in mind what you're going to do, um, so what? No. This is hard, right? Yeah. We don't know what we're going to do. So, um, next week we should know. So, so given the, your thoughts about the, the End of the Oregon Trail, what, what would you see, and I say you, I'm really looking to the entire, um, um, commission as well as the staff, but what would you put in there that especially would be within staff capacity, um, and within what time period? Terry?
Yeah, I, I guess I would just say what I said before, it's like, you know, kind of come up, if we can at least come up with a possible temporary plan for, you know, for a year, two years, whatever it's going to be, that at least we have some way to utilize that building, uh, in some minimal way, even if it's just, you know, occasionally, once a month, we rent out the space. I don't know. Um, but, uh, you know, I don't see anything more than that being on the list and, you know, as a priority.
Right away.
I think, I think we'll need to, probably need to look at, depending on what the commission wants to do with, with this. We'll have to look at our issue with our charter there. I know there were some discussions previously about what we can do and what we can't do, rental, et cetera. And so that's something we'll have to take a look at before we can make any decision on that.
I want to make this suggestion, if I might, for a ten-minute break. If somebody leaves, I think we have others that would like.
We'll be back in at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Ten, ten minutes till, actually.
One minute to time. I know how it works, nine o'clock.
With the dynamics, obviously, but it seems to me that if you have.
Oh, thank you. But perhaps this might be, say, as a milestone, but as a two-year milestone as opposed to a one-year milestone, in that the commission would receive regular reports about what staff is, is doing in terms of looking into uses for, for the museum. Is that, is that acceptable? Commissioner, is that? Okay, so I saw nods all around. So let's, again, we're still looking at what can we cut. Right, um, and, and it's interesting, because, Commissioner Smith, you said these are really, really hard decisions. Yeah. Well, it's the hard, these are the really tough decisions, and so if you're putting Blue Heron on, um, so, Mayor, you had, you wanted.
Yeah, I'm just going to, um, I mean, with that comes for the South Bend concept, uh, planning process, I think that might as well stand. We're talking about that being a two-year process. We already talked about priorities goal three of, of, of goal five there. Water rate rollback, um, um, is just. is just something that has to really go forward because it's a major decision, even though that occurs in 1014, uh, we need to know what kinds of actions we need to take before then. Prior annexation pledge, we have a prior annexation pledge. I don't think there's any, I, I mean, that's a fact. There's not any effort that's associated with that, we have made that pledge, okay? So that's an ongoing goal. Hard maintenance utility. From my standpoint, this is something that would not happen during the period of our, uh, prior annexation pledge. I mean, we're, I don't, I don't believe we should add fees and, and pretend they're not effective taxes in a sense. And so uh, that, that, that holds on there. The determination process of exploration, um, I don't know that takes much time. The last one, um, you know, there's a few things there. Well, you know, available source of a library site? Uh, uh, towards, I think there's so many things that we've got to look at in our relations with the county, which actually includes a library site. Yeah.
We also have some momentum, I think, right now in our relationship with that.
Yeah.
Just speak from a long 11-month timeframe, but we've been really working at it, trying to get a better relationship. And I think we've made some progress. So I'm expecting, I think now's really a good time to seize that opportunity and because it's, we're more likely to be successful. I know some of you have also been, have met with some of the county elected officials, which I encourage you to continue doing as well. So if you're feeling the same sort of positive interaction that I feel like I'm getting from this, at the staff level, that might be one that we should keep doing.
I agree, that's, um. I, I'm feeling very much reaching out from each one of the county commissioners, you know, wanting to meet with different things. Something to that, something that's very close to this point. Okay, so you were about to move to the last one on.
Yeah. Well, I think it's frustrating to all of us. Actually, we started doing things back in when John Williams was mayor and nothing has really transpired. Um, it's true, some questions. Um, I, if anything, I would like to see this stated as a two-year goal as opposed to a one-year goal, if we're going to keep it. Um, at one point, I mean, someone's going to have to be there to take minutes and so forth, so there are going to be staff resources that are tied up with this. And I'm just frustrated that it's just taking so long to do that. Well, I think it would involve the attorney. Yeah, um, well, we have an attorney, attorney costs associated with Blue Heron, and then we have attorney, um, costs associated with this activity, so it's, it's a place of our budget as well and what we can do with our budget, even if, however, however we decided the, the city manager didn't really have to be involved, that'd be mostly attorney's work. That is additional monies that would have to be devoted to that effort.
So what, you want like a two-year priority kind of thing, is that what you're thinking?
I think that's what I was saying.
And because um, I'm not as familiar with what's involved in reviewing and establishing a, a charter review committee, are there certain areas of the charter that are critical to be fixed and others that should come within a two-year timeframe? But others that. Well, we've been waiting on the wrong night for how long now, Ken? A long time.
No, there are things in the challenge shouldn't be there. It doesn't, it, it doesn't repeat us in any way, it's just a poorly rooted offense.
Yes, yeah.
Some parts, yeah.
Some parts, thank you.
But it doesn't, it doesn't keep us from talking to you right now.
So, so how are you going to gain? Again, I'm, I keep pushing on this, you know, trade-off. Yes. So have you, you know, where, where are the, uh, the trade-offs? What are you, are you, are you taking away to take in Blue Heron?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'll put state a couple of things. I think um, the city attorney wrote us a memo on the charter amendment process and you identified that as taking into 2012, 2012 anyway. So I, I don't disagree with the mayor that it is a two-year process and I don't mind um, identifying it as such, but I do think it's something that should be accepted. Um, and if it's, if it's, you know, dealt, if it's addressed as a two-year timeframe, that's fine.
Okay, so two years, I mean, staff, what are you thinking?
Well, you know, and be, and keep in mind that um, a year from now, some of the things we think we can do will be done, some of the things we thought we could do won't be done.
Yep.
Um, I think it's better to have it on there as a two-year timeframe because then when we come back and check in next year on what we accomplished, we can look at whether that is, is still viable, at least it's still on the list.
Yes.
Um, so I think that's a better solution than trying to think that we could do it all at once.
Yeah.
I have a question for the, um, well, for staff and, and the city attorney. Um, back to the 2014 water rate rollback. When we had first looked at this as part of the goal setting session, I had it in my mind that it was something to do with the charter. And I'm looking and I researched the charter, section 58, which is our last section of the charter, deals with water rates, but the date 2014 is not in that section.
That's correct.
And I'm just wondering what, what is the 2014 date about?
Let me blather for a little bit. Um, when we passed the, uh, the rate amendment, when voters passed the amendment in 96, we were immediately sued by a bond company. Uh, and the bond company said that effectively impairs our contract. And they brought the suit in federal court. And uh, I happened to agree with them and I said that when, when the amendment was passed. The federal court said, I'm going to strike this amendment for the life of the existing bonds, the last ones of which would go, go out in 2014. So that's how we got to that date. We will have all our, then existing water bonds paid in 2014 and then the charter provision will kick into, into being. Does that help?
So does that mean that in 2014, that's the date at which water rates will roll back to the rates they were on October 31st, 1994?
I will give you the lawyer's answer and that is, it depends. Because there are at least, there, there are at least two constructions and maybe three that can be made of this charter. The first is everything rolls back as to October of 96. The second is everything rolls back with 3% because in most years, the city raised its rates 3% uh, to take care of existing obligations, but we didn't do it every year. So is it 3% per year from 96 to 2012 or whenever we deal with it? Is it just those years we raise the rates or does it automatically go back to October 31 of 96? That's the question. And here's what I've done to try to help pose this question. I went to bond counsel and said, what do you think? They say the only way they're going to write their name on a bond, which is the only way they're going to sell a bond, is that we either fix this by charter, which is the preferred group, or we make a validation suit, which means it's an all-comer's suit, put notice in the newspaper saying that on such and such a date in Clackamas County Circuit Court, anybody who objects to this view of how the charter is construed has to come in, the court will then hear the arguments, make a decision which can be appealed. If you do that, then you have to make the choice of one of those three settings that I mentioned. October 31, 96, 5% for every year or 3% for the years that we actually raised the rates. They say, and I say to you, that it's far better for us to deal with a charter. Now, we know that it, it'll kick in in 2014. The best time to, to deal with that is in 2012. A, because if you don't make it the first time, you've got more time to look at. Uh, and B, we don't know when in 2014 right now, but we will have an idea that uh, if we've got two shots in 2012 plus all the special elections, we have enough time to come up with a solution that uh, will, uh, will be effective. So, sorry, wait.
You just, I just had a question because you mentioned bonds and bond counsel.
Right.
Um, were you talking about bonds just for water issues or any bond?
No, 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 this is a water rate rollback, so it's only water bonds. That's a significant capital issue and that's all I've got with that. Thank you, hope that helps.
Thank you.
So I think we've done that, uh, we are at 9:15.
Well, so, so my question actually then is, with the addition of Blue Heron, what's, what's your sense, staff, um, about the, where we've come in terms of acknowledging the additional work that's going to be necessary, the additional resource going to be necessary and the degree to which we have been able to revise all these, these goals?
Well, I think we're, I think we're better, better off than we were when we sat down here two hours ago. I think we've made a lot of progress. Um, I, I believe this is a really ambitious plan right here, the way we have it. Um, I will be, you know, part of the Blue Heron task for me is to continually find out more information and bring it back to the commission.
Right.
As I continue to do that, I think we will, we will either get a timeout that I'm hoping for or, or we will have a bigger project uh, that's more, I, I don't know, it's a very dynamic situation. And I think the answers about whether this is uh, too much for us to do, I think there's a fair chance that it is too much for us to do, but I think we can try to do it. And I feel good about trying our best to accomplish everything that's on here, especially given the fact that so many of you have been willing to look at a two-year timeframe. So um, I think, you know, congratulations.
If, if I might, because I know if I won't do this, I'll be accused of discrimination, all of that. I want to request from Karen Murray to speak and I know if I win this one, I'm going to be able to.
Okay, so can I address, too many years of watching uh, this commission in action. Just a few observations. At the very beginning, the discussion I'm hearing is that two of the priorities were the Cromatory along the Clackamas River at the code. Congratulations, King Canute, if you can hold the waters of the Clackamas River back, I'm very impressed. As the Sandy River just proved, rivers will do what rivers will do. The Cromatory is an artificial remnant of a solid piece of land. If that's one of your priorities, I think that's an exercise in insanity. Um, and as much as I would love to redevelop Blue Heron and there are some incredible historic sites on the Blue Heron site, right now that is private property in bankruptcy, that at some point will emerge from bankruptcy. It is up to the bank if they want to come to the city. If that is one of the city's priorities, we're going to be sitting on our hams for quite some time until that is settled. What I have dismissed were the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, which actually provided us with the possibility of jobs that could replace the Blue Heron jobs. That's possible industrial lands, also the South End Concept Plan, which would possibly add some jobs and add something other than residential because Oregon City for the last many years has added residential lands, we have not added job lands. It seems to me that one of the things the city needs to be focused on is adding jobs and I haven't heard that as a priority tonight. Your taxpayers need jobs, your schools need jobs, your schools need income taxes. And that's what I have to say.
Would I like to suggest something? Because I believe we have maintained economic development strategy, considered strategies focused on resources for local, uh, localizing our economy and industry clusters. I do believe that it is pertaining to the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, do apply in, in this particular piece. And I, I suggested before and I, I guess you suggested, um, I think the question was a shovel ready, the, the point is you don't have any monies to make that area shovel ready. Uh, but what we do have the basis of doing, I think, is talking to the college and to the high school in terms of what jobs can be produced in that, uh, jobs creating area in that, in that area. And once we have people that are, say, well, gee, we got the college here and this is going to fit, then I think we'll be in a position to go ahead and start looking at that, at that area. And so I, I, I personally feel that the economic development strategy in terms of industry clusters does encompass what in fact is in our Beaver Creek Concept. Uh, that, that concept plan is going to come back to us in any case. I mean, that's, that's, that's a non-issue. Uh, we're going to see it, you know, then we can have, start having the dialogue. Uh, so I think that's the jobs piece. Um, and I, 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 if I can editorialize a little bit here.
You're the mayor.
The, the, the code is, is, is a, been always regarded as a resource. Yes, the river is going to do what the river is going to do, but we've taken action before to stabilize those banks. And the point is what does it become if in fact, uh, that, that peninsula goes away? I mean, the very, very findings of, of the group may be, no, you shouldn't bother to do it. I mean, that might be, that might be a finding of the National Resource Committee. We might find it's too expensive to do so in the process. We might find out that, uh, it's going to go at one point or another, no matter what you do to it in the process. I think that's part of, of what the, of what this committee is going to do. I, 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 yeah, so, I mean, it's worth a look at. And well, in fact, I heard both commissioners say we shouldn't be looking at that, so.
And in terms of uh, economic improvement, there's also, we haven't really talked about the downtown, but we've got an economic development improvement district, so, so that's another, another jobs focus.
And those are the areas that the jobs have been identified in at this point.
Commissioner Nastia?
Okay, um, there are a couple of things on the suggested priorities not yet addressed that I do feel compelled to raise.
Okay, so look, before I move on to that, I just want to make absolutely sure that as of right now, um, the commission, I recognize you want to discuss a few more things, but that depending on what might happen under the suggested priorities, that actually you're feeling comfortable with the revisions that have been made, which I realize everyone might not feel comfortable with the notes they've taken, but based on what you remember of the discussion, the decision, the agreements, um, that the revisions seem to work um, and that you'd be able to, to go forward with this particular priorities, milestones and work plan. And then recognizing that you want to, I guess what I'm getting at is driven the difficulty of taking things off of here, which were absolutely based on two work sessions and individual conversations, these were your absolute top priorities.
Right.
So I want you to keep that in mind as we, because you had some suggestions, suggested priorities as did some of the other commissioners, but I just really want to hold your feet to the fire that there absolutely needs, if we're, if anything here is adopted, that some things have to come off.
Exactly.
On that exact score, I'm going to propose that already the, the highest priorities I have to, to advance right now, I think space has already been made for them. Specifically, I want to raise two issues with the police force. We've already set back the police station for a year. And as far as staff availability, I think the staff that would degrade. And as far as staff availability, I think the staff that would be dressed is, are the chief, and his staff. And that since we've set the police station back, I think that does maybe, or, you know, I see your evidence on this, open up space for the department to consider these priorities. I agree completely with the mayor who raised the issue of creating a reserve fund for police hired under the cops grant to ensure that their positions are covered until we can increase tax rate. I think it's very important that we train those officers. I had mentioned creating a traffic enforcement unit. I think that position's changed a little after my ride-along Friday night, but I think also.
But the reason I say that is Sergeant Cranger told me that there's, I guess, there's a traffic patrol duty worked into this in normal coverage.
Right. It actually allows us to put more officers in to deal with the traffic than it would have a singular, two traffic officers.
And with that knowledge, I don't think that's as high a priority. I did want to run by you with the idea I had raised, one of the first things I ever raised as commissioner was the idea that, I guess, you did have in Mount Angel, and Milwaukee has, as far as raising funds for things like training, which is the assessment on moving violas and tickets. I think in Milwaukee, it's 10 or 20 bucks. And they use the money, they use the money to bolster the department with equipment and training and things like that. And I think that's something that, you know.
We, Sergeant, we actually have that. We, there used to be a $10 city assessment in every traffic conviction, and that money now goes directly to the police department for training and equipment purposes. So, that is already actually in place.
How did that get adopted? Because when I raised it two years ago, it seemed that it wasn't in place.
It wasn't. Originally, that $10 assessment went into the city's general fund. And now, after talking with Mr. Frazier and discussing a few things and everything, we thought it might be a good use of that money to help train the officers and equip the officers, specifically for the patrol function, traffic, and responding to calls and things like that. So, that money is now going to be set aside for purchasing equipment and for helping train officers, which are, both are obviously very important.
So, we've accomplished a goal already. I would like to raise Mayor Neely's concern to the level of a goal.
Right, Russ, you're talking about the cops grant?
Yeah.
I do not believe that you need to create a separate reserve fund for that, and I'll tell you why. When the city decided to sign off on this cops grant, and these cops grants have been around since the, well, early years of the Clinton administration, and I've dealt with them in every city I've been in, and there's a three-year timeline, and when you sign up with DOJ for that grant, you already obligate your city. We're obligated already. We have to budget for that, or we will owe DOJ a whole bunch of money. So, we're going to be budgeting for that because we've already made the obligations. So, regardless of what, I mean, even if the commission told us not to, I would probably budget for it, and then we'd have it out somehow, because we are obligated to do that, and it doesn't have to be a goal. And we don't even, we won't even set aside a reserve fund, we'll actually put it in the police department's operating budget. And I believe the grant requires us to do this then. I don't think we can even set aside a separate fund, we have to budget for it.
Can I pursue that a bit? Because you don't have a reserve fund, and yet, what, the two years before, the cops grant went for how many years?
For three years, and we're about a year into it now, not quite.
There's a percentage each year. So, the first year to pay for all of it, is it all of it the first year or seventy-five?
It's, all of it's paid for for the first three years, then there's an obligation for the city to pick up an additional year at the city's expense at the end of those three years. So, it's a four-year grant, the city pays the four-year of it.
I just want to make sure we don't make obligations in our budget process that precludes us from doing that in that final year, and that's why I was suggesting a reserve fund.
That would just be irresponsible budgeting on the part of your budget officer to allow that to happen. I mean, you're not telling me, don't default the city on its other obligations, and I'm not going to do that either. I mean, this has to be done. It's not optional.
So, let me ask, how you want to deal with the list of 31 suggested priorities not yet addressed? Because I know Mayor Neely usually asks people to look at their top five, and my question to you is, perhaps going around and just asking one by one, is there anything on this suggested priorities not yet addressed list that you feel is, you know, is critical enough that something here would be set aside or reduced? And because, I mean, obviously, I mean, I'm willing to facilitate you through a discussion of all 31 items, minus, I guess, the one that you took off. I'm just, I'm just wondering, though, what's the best use of your time in terms of addressing these, given the difficulty we had in, you know, and looking at what can be cut back from this, and having heard from your staff that this actually may be already more than can be handled?
Before we enter into that discussion, I actually have a question for Mr. Wimmer. And my question is based on a discussion I had with Mr. Edgar regarding the city's budget process and the use of encumbered funds in the city's budget, and that we're using more of them these days, more of encumbered funds?
Encumbrance is a tool that you have a purchase order. When you issue a purchase order, you have a, you reduce your expenditures, even though you haven't really expended them yet. So, we don't, we do not, we take another person at least to have an encumbrance system. It's a nice tool, but what your question was, we have a system where we show when we write a check, that reduces our budget. I've been here 17 years, and we have reports before then, we've had them every day since I've been here, that show whenever you write it, have an expenditure, how much expenditures you have left.
But is, I don't know, the terminology, does an encumbered fund mean that it's not available to the general fund?
No.
Okay.
You can have encumbrances for every fund. It's a double coming process. First, you write a purchase order before you ever go spend anything, and you make an entry in your books, encumbrances and reserve for encumbrances, it's sort of a reservation, and then you go out and spend the money, then it becomes an actual expenditure, then the encumbrances go away, then the actual expenditure takes its place.
So, it's a reservation of expenditure of a, it's a expense you want.
Yeah, like when I was working in county, we had up to three people to the county, that's all they did was hit encumbrances. If we could do it here, I mean, our system has even had a column for encumbrances, but it's going to take another person to have that luxury. What we do now, when we write a check, expenditures can reduce, it's other way, it reduces before you write the check.
Okay.
It's a nice thing to have. Especially when you have giant budgets, hundreds of millions of dollars, and you've got, say, maybe $300,000 or $500,000 contract or something out there that you're committed to, but we just haven't had the manpower to do that, and our expenditures are not that big that, I don't think that we really need that system. It'd be nice to have if we had both two people.
Right, okay, okay. So, I just wanted to see if that informed our decision-making at all tonight. So, on that, yeah, I think we could, Mr. Mayor, your suggestion about seeing if there's anything on anybody's list that would, you know, rise to the level of displacing something else.
I would just say that the things we discussed, the amount that I listed, have been addressed in one way or another that aren't. And I think a lot of the others have too, and I think it's probably up to each person that just presents things to take a look, have they been addressed elsewhere? Many of them have, and to argue your case if you want to throw another one in there. But from my standpoint, mine have been covered in one way or another in discussions.
I'll say that some of the things that I suggested can be raised within the context of the Urban Renewal Commission as opposed to the City Commission. And what Dan Rehnall mentioned about consultants, I also think that some of what I've raised can be addressed with consultants. So, let me ask David, if something can be addressed with consultants, do you feel that we are at liberty to raise them as a priority tonight as goals, or is that something that we can reserve for discussion later on?
Well, depending on the nature of the project, I'll say two things about consultants. First of all, even the very, very best consultant has to have a staff support interface person. And when I say the very best, I'm talking about the ones who don't ever shovel their work onto the staff. There are a few of those around, because it just invariably happens that the staff has to do some other work. And so, it really just depends on the size and the scope of the project. Okay, one thing, sure, go ahead.
I saw that Tricia Mind, Commissioner Smith, Mayor Neely have said, basically, you're good, but so.
You're wonderful.
I never doubt my mind, but Tricia Ross, would you speak to this? And not wanting to cut you off, going to give you, but.
What I'm seeing is, you know, going over these one by one, I'm seeing most of these things I can see fitting into other goals. I think that we've addressed a good deal of these inside of other goals, and I don't see anything we need to add on to the list.
So, Commissioner, is there?
I'll just mention a couple of these. The Natural Resources Committee has a couple of tasks set for it. Just because we have been given really a gift, which was that the State Department of Jaws, Jalousy, and Mineral Industries actually chose Oregon City for its pilot project for LiDAR mapping. So, we have that gift, it's a very valuable mapping resource. I've had citizens recommend that, because we've been giving this, that there's, you know, every reason for us to bolster our ordinances, especially steep slopes ordinances, based on this, you know, this resource. You know, the Goal Five process is inventory, and you pass an ordinance based on that inventory. Given the LiDAR maps we have and what they show us, it doesn't seem to me an enormous investment to base, you know, base an ordinance based on these.
I totally agree, we've done that. In August, we used the latest LiDAR map that we have to create the 15, 200-foot buffers.
Didn't I just read something you're going to be doing in the education process on that for the community or something? No?
Okay. Yeah.
I think we've got that one. She's going through some of these other.
So, are you suggesting that now's the time for high fives?
Yeah, I think that's impressive.
Okay, thank you all very much. Mayor?
Well, I got to be here on my agenda today.
Clarification? I'm going to be right in these and turn them back to you. The National Resource Committee you have put on for your Goal One, are we removing that from Goal Five? It's kind of a duplicate at this point.
I thought that we're not, we don't have a choice, we don't have a list of ones.
One and a one, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, it looks like we're in general business, well, communications, and we'll start with the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of things about the Blue Heron site, and I'm so tired of saying that both tonight already, but. So, Blue Heron has two components, the property part, which is largely the planning and the future, and the people part. And so, what I want to talk to you about tonight is a little bit about the people part of what I know there. Mayor Neely and I met with county elected leaders and their economic development staff and some other folks from the state and from the Clackamas Community College this week, early this week, to talk about the 175 employees that are displaced there from unemployment. We learned that the Workforce Investment Council, they actually provided us with some various things that they had been doing, including their, they told us that they have been working with Blue Heron since they conducted their first layoff over a year ago. At that time, Blue Heron's petition for Trade Act support was approved and is still in effect. What that really means is that all the employees are potentially eligible for Trade Act benefits. Those are distributed on an individual basis. The laid-off workers may have up to 26 weeks to receive Trade Act-funded training and benefits while receiving unemployment insurance. They're also going to be holding some rapid response sessions, they have a rapid response team, they call it. Some of you may have already read this, so I'll try to wrap up here, but what this essentially means is they have streamlined unemployment applications. They also, depending on their eligibility, could be getting rental support, commuting costs, health insurance, family support, mental health benefits, domestic crisis support. And then the Workforce Investment Council is also considering applying for a national emergency grant, which would include additional housing costs and extended health insurance for affected workers. There is some concern that that, the last thing, the grant, is doubtful, because the federal government is maybe closing the Grand Canyon or whatever they're about to do. So, that's maybe a speculative one, but that is one of the things that they're going to plan on doing. So, I was, overall, I think I'm pleased that there seemed to be a lot of people from, there were people from Congressman Schrader's office there, and Representative Hunt's office as well, and various county commissioners that came in. Yes, and so, that's essentially where we're at right now. Yes, I said that. Yeah, I said Clackamas Community College. And the college actually administers this workforce, these workforce benefits, and they're in charge of the program. And the day after it happened, I started getting emails from different, and I found out many of us were doing the same thing. So, on the people part, the city goal is essentially one of, I've been trying to get in touch with people from Blue Heron, we haven't been successful in doing that yet, but what I want to try to do is touch base with them, somebody who represents their employees from time to time, and just say, are you getting the things you're supposed to get? Are you receiving the benefits you're supposed to receive? And almost like be a conduit or a support mechanism for them, another place to call if for some reason they can't seem to get the assistance they need, and then we can try to intervene and ask the right people to get the assistance to them. So, that's the situation on Blue Heron. And then also, recently, we went to the Newsmaker event, and I brought a copy of a newspaper that they published, the Newsmaker event, and our own Lloyd Purdy is right here, right here on the front cover, and his name is on here, he was up on the stage with CEOs from Team Footwear, who's another Oregon company, executives from Intel, Ron Whitehead's representative was there, there were a lot of big profile players, and our own downtown guy was there on the stage with all these people. And when Lloyd got up to speak, and they all got a very brief comment, like 30 seconds to comment, the moderator mentioned something about the turnout from Oregon City, and when Lloyd got up, the applause was thunderous. He got more applause than anybody that was there, and I think it's because our community turned out to say, we're somebody, and we matter, and we're here, and come do business with us. It was fantastic for Oregon City, so I just want to. It was fantastic, uh, for Oregon City. So I just wanna, again, congratulate Lloyd. And then I believe the staff have a couple of things. We'll start with Dan and then go around the circle.
Yeah, just a couple of reminders. We scheduled Tuesday, March fifteenth from five to seven here for the Urban Renewal One-on-One training. And then, um, on Wednesday, March ninth at one o'clock at Urban Plaza, we're meeting for the second part of the downtown dialogue. We're gonna go to North Williams Street and talk to some retail businesses there. They have a lot of applicable, uh, knowledge and, um, stories about how they brought their businesses up. And it has a lot of applicability to what's happening in Main Street in Oregon City. So, um, if you would, contact me if you're interested in going and trying to get a head count for I don't know how big of a bus we're gonna need for that, so.
At your places, you have a little packet that have a few letters and a flyer. It's the Energy Efficiency on Main Street program. I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Uh, the Energy Efficiency on Main Street is a Blackamas County program. It's in tandem with the Energy Trust of Oregon. They provide up to five thousand dollar rebates and some, um, uh, ETO incentives and it is specific for our downtown businesses. It's available for Main Street districts. And so our downtown commercial businesses have been eligible for this. Lloyd and I have really worked on pushing this information out to our downtown, making sure our property and business owners are aware of this program. Uh, the funding for this comes from the ARRA and USDA through an energy conservation block grant through the county. And, um, great news, I wanted to at least let you know that we've had at least six property owners who have participated in this program to get some energy upgrades in their, in their facilities down there. And for a total investment of just a little over fifty-five thousand dollars. So information's getting out there. It's trickling through our downtown. You'll also see a letter in there from Lloyd to me and he just wanted me to let you know that, an interesting point, that of those six property or business owners, five of those who have taken advantage of these rebates, have opposed the formation of the EID program. And so while they feel that maybe they are not, um, benefiting from the Main Street program, they have benefited from these energy upgrades, which are only available to Main Street programs. But we'll continue to share this information with our downtown group.
Thanks. Um, I just have a couple of quick things. First of all, in light of the Blue Heron closure, um, we felt compelled to put together a little brochure about the resources for job seeking that are available at the library. And I'll pass that down if you wouldn't mind. We have some great resources. One of the databases which is available, um, to library cardholders from home, actually includes testing and, you know, all this practice stuff that you can actually get on and do. So it's very, very cool. And then another thing that I wanted to, um, ask about is that a library board is essentially acting as a site selection recommendation committee to the, um, City Commission. And we had one meeting where we started looking at the sites that are available to date and kind of betting which ones we want to start kind of focusing on, not that that eliminates anything, but that we want to start focusing on. And, um, we were a little concerned that we were getting out not ahead of the commission, but we wanted to be sure we kept the commission in the loop. So, um, one of the suggestions that we had was to ask if the commission would like to, um, volunteer a liaison to the committee that could attend these meetings. Pardon? Uh, our meetings are typically, um, once a month, although we may have to have some extra meetings. And they are on the second Wednesday of the month at four thirty. So next week we're having a meeting, but it won't be, we will be discussing a library facility, but not specifically a site. If we appoint somebody, I would like to kind of get them up to speed by next Wednesday, just so then that they attended anything we talked about, that would be, we'd all be on the same page. But, um, this, the meeting we had was an executive session because of course some of the information that we're discussing is confidential at this point. So we just had one meeting and it was just kind of a review of, of what we've collected so far. So that's all we've done. We, we don't need the whole board is the problem. I would be patient with enthusiasm. We, we already had the entire, um, library board, that's eight people on the committee. So one person was all I was really looking for, but I'll let you guys discuss them yourselves.
Is that a mayoral appointment?
Who checks out the most books?
The only thing, the only thing I con, I would caution the position is a liaison position. It is, the board is a group. We, we had a, a point where one or two of our, uh, committees, advisory committees, actually had a commission position. And the difficulty with that was that the board tended to defer to comments made by the member of the commission. And, uh, if, if somebody's gonna be on this, they really have to act as a liaison. And, uh, if whoever can assure me that they can do that, then that'll be fine. And we, we, in fact, I was one of those people that was on one of those. I was on the traffic advisory committee. And I felt very uncomfortable there because they were listening to me too much. So you want to be out? You're out yet? You're, you're out.
Thank you very much.
And we have one more? Two more? That's right.
One more thing I would advise is to have the all city staff and commission go through the ICMA ethics training. And, uh, I've finally coordinated with, uh, Monica Corrego from ICMA to do that training sometime in the first week of May. So for, you know, the commission, uh, need you to check your calendar. We do have a commission meeting on that Wednesday, the fifth, I believe. But it would be, it would probably be outside of that. It would be an afternoon, uh, training session. It's a four hour training. And, uh, that's about all I know at the moment.
And commissioners, just wanted to let you know, that we have completed as of this last week, the, uh, the signage project on the McGoughland Promenade. Hopefully get to take a look at that at some point if you already have it. Sounds like, sounds like some of you already have. Uh, it's, it's an, uh, it was an identification and directional program. Uh, we really worked hard on, on making it look appropriate. Went through a lot of, uh, discussions, HRB and different reviews and, and just, uh, yeah, really pleased with how that turned out. Also, a part of that was, uh, the, the, um, interpretive panel on the Fifth Street entrance, on the, on the Promenade side, the interpretation of the Keith and Lila Kelly story, which, uh, I think a lot of you probably know, they're long time volunteers who both passed away now. Anyway, we, we've been wanting to complete a memorial, uh, interpretation sometime for quite a while and that's done too, so.
Is that, is that, that's it? Michael. I haven't said, uh, much about, uh, the Met Ball, the advisory committee that I serve on. And that's because the council almost saw the meeting. Till the last one. There, there was the first one I did attend, but it was really taking care of old business, uh, uh, before, uh, Council Liberty left. There are things that he was involved in that got, uh, taken care of at that one. But this one, uh, they're looking at, uh, getting and creating rules for a sustainable community. There was a presentation by several people, but they were pointing out the greenhouse gas emission and transportation is increasing and it constitutes forty percent of the greenhouse, and I think they're talking about the Willamette watershed here, uh, airshed, excuse me. Forty percent of the greenhouse gas, the residential, commercial thirty-five percent. It's also increasing. Industrial, about twenty percent, it's decreasing. Agriculture is consistent around five percent or so. And they're looking at, uh, developing some target rules. And, uh, there were discussions of that. And what I wanted to let the, uh, uh, council know, they've got a couple of events that are planned. One is on March twenty-ninth. A, uh, Patrick Condon from, he's from, uh, he's a professor at the University of British Columbia. I've heard him speak before. Uh, he's written a book called The Seven Rules for Sustainable, uh, uh, Communities. He's gonna be speaking, uh, at the Metro Regional Center. He'll be at the council chamber and he'll be there from eleven-thirty AM to one PM on Tuesday, March twenty-ninth. So if any of you want to attend his presentation, uh, please do so. Uh, I, I may not be able to make it, uh, but, um, I, I, I did hear a, a presentation from him and he's, he's very, very good. Uh, perhaps more important, and this is for elected officials, there's the Climate Leadership Summit that's being organized from eight AM to noon, Friday, April first, at the Convention Center. And, uh, Oregon Convention Center, uh, if anybody is interested and, um, I can get copies of this to you. They do, they do want you to go ahead and, uh, make a reservation to be there. But it's open to all, all, uh, all elected officials. There's a meeting of the group, uh, it's the Willamette Falls Heritage, but it's not the area coalition. It's the Willamette Falls Heritage Coalition, which is a different group altogether. I get so confused. I hope, I'm hoping to put together this group. You can tell me what they're all doing. But basically, I know a lot of what they're doing. They're doing with locks. And, um, they, uh, well, that's one of their major things. It's, it's locks issue and I was invited there. We, and I just imagine we've committed a thousand dollars, is that right? Uh, but well, it was, it was the amount that Wes Lynn has contributed. I think that was the basis for it. PG has contributed more and other groups have contributed more. The current, the current federal funding calls for caretaker level, which is really going down there, once a month, opening up the locks, checking and so forth. And it is not for commercial transportation. It's just making sure everything's working. And there's, uh, there were representatives from, uh, from, uh, Mercury's officer and also from, um, um, Contreras officer. And hoping that we can look at some level, even a minimal level of funding for having commercial transportation. There is one commercial transportation, uh, uh, user down there and he schedules a sign when those things are being worked on and so forth. And, uh, and he's able to transport in that period tons of material. He, uh, is whatever his business is, and I'm not sure what it is. So, um, it, you know, just having a caretaker basis is not doing what the locks were intended to do. And so, um, anyway, this group is recollased and, uh, is together. The, um, the other thing, and this was today, I went to the, the Big of Oregon Cities, had a mayor's day and I was not able to be there the whole day today, but I did attend some of the, uh, meetings where they were talking about the issues that they were, they were looking at. I'd like to take a moment to talk about a few of them. A local control referral, uh, is being proposed as, uh, uh, going to the voters. Uh, it would be a constitutional referral, I believe. It's to allow the voters to extend from five to ten years, a timeframe for any newly approved local option operating levies. I presume they're restricted, uh, uh, Mr. Sullivan to five years at this point. The next one, uh, also under this is provide that measure five limitations that result in compression not be applicable to new voter approval, approved levies. David Rimmer could perhaps talk about that, but there's a, there's a limit for all levies, all taxing districts, uh, within a given area. And if you, if you have a new levy that comes up and boosts you above that limit, everybody has to go down. It's all a compression. And this is an effort to eliminate that for any new levies that are coming up. And, uh, allow voters to renew local option levies at, at the eight, at, at the eight-year mark. And I'm not sure what that represents. That's, that's probably fairly important to us. This one is, uh, one that probably won't affect us too much, but it's a transit, they're, they're proposing a a transit lodging tax bill to remove the current prohibition restriction, uh, the use of seventy percent of the revenues derived going to, uh, basically tourism promotion and so forth for any increases in the tax. Right now, we've got to commit seventy percent. We do have a tax, a four percent tax. And the county has a six percent tax. So the single hotel we have here in Oregon City pays ten percent taxes, six to the county board to us. I would doubt we'd be looking to increase the taxes to the, to the hotel. It's a pretty steep tax rate. But if we were, we would not be constrained to the additional amount that we would increase it to have seventy percent go to tourism. Couple other things, uh, deal with the shared, state shared revenue. The reason this one popped up is the governor is recommending that the money's coming in from gasoline taxes and so forth, is recommending that ninety-three million dollars be directed to state police. Now, yes, take that to a vote of the people. I mean, it doesn't happen automatically. If that happens, then we will have the amount of revenue coming back to us from state taxes reduced. So the city would get less money if this were done. The other one's a municipal water rights issue and really it's an, uh, an effort to keep basically the current system in place. It's not, it's not an election issue, but there have been challenges by various groups, uh, trying to, uh, trying to, in terms of conservation measures, trying to perhaps reduce the water rights that are going into the current municipalities. Those are the three, those three things that were there, but there are a couple of other things that are coming up, that are being considered. There's, uh, there's a discussion, local grants for comprehensive plans. We get saved money for that? Well, this, I don't know if that's what's being discussed here. It probably is. In terms of them looking for budget, there's a possibility of forty, forty percent reduction in all the spend funds. And the other thing that is being proposed by, actually David Hunt to go forward, wouldn't apply to us. But where there are island, you can have an island annexation. If you have an island, you can automatically annex it, annex it with a, with a city determination. In our case, it'd be a voter, a voter-based determination to annex the islands. He's putting forward, if you have an island that's more than nineteen, nineteen acres, which is a substantial island, that it'd be a double majority. That is, the city and the area that's being, the island's being annexed is, uh, uh, would be required to in order for the annexation. Or those were a couple of items that I thought were of specific interest to you that have come out in that particular discussion. That's my report. I know others have things to say and I saw Rocky Smith's hand go up.
Well, I'm gonna share about our experience from, uh, yesterday a little bit. Commissioner Mum, uh, Mayor Neely and myself, um, and our city manager, took advantage of a tour from ODOT of the bridge and, um, it was incredible. I didn't really know what we were gonna see, um, or what we were gonna do, but I didn't want to miss any chance of seeing um, anything that I haven't seen already. In the. In the history of living in Oregon City, I've heard many stories about the Arch Bridge and its history, and people walking over the arches and riding motorcycles over the arches. Never did I ever, I never thought I would be able to say that I had had that experience.
No, motorcycles?
I do. Yeah, I always wondered about what it would be like to stand on top of the Arch Bridge, but, you know, I figured it would probably involve, you know, the police department in some way. But we were able, three of us, to stand together at the top of the Arch Bridge, which was amazing. It was, we took some pictures. It was, it was incredible. Definitely a highlight in my life. And got to go, me and Doug crawled into a hole in the under part of the bridge. You went down to the first level. And so, there's a hole right underneath the street level that goes into the bottom part of the arch. And then there's a series of ladders that go, you know, almost straight down the arch towards the river. And so, they took us into the first section, which there was a platform, just so we could see the inside of the bridge, which was incredible in itself. And then we're kind of making hints, well, does anyone want to go further? And as we kept going, the more things, people started saying, oh, well, maybe, I don't know. So Doug and myself walked, or, you know, went all the way down into the base of the bridge to water level. It was awesome. It was incredible.
At one point, there was only one Wes Lynn councillor there.
And no county commissioner.
And no, you're right. And no county commissioner.
And I went to the bottom, and Doug was coming down, and I thought, oh, it was silly, because I didn't know he was going to see us. I just think I would have been able to stop him. And he was slippery, too. Anyway, I just wanted to thank them for that piece of history. And it was so, I mean, we've all talked about this project so much and know so much about it, but to actually go in to see it to that detail, and to see even more so the passion that they have for it, it's such a cool thing. And I'll remember it forever. It was, it was really amazing. Couple of the real bits of information that I got from the tour that I was very surprised by was one that I'd been wondering about, which is the shuttle. And I think we were all very impressed. They've had nine, about nineteen hundred riders in the first month on the shuttle across the bridge, which really surprised me. I think that's great. And over two hundred bicycles. So I think that's pretty amazing. And we're, we're gonna, we might be given a gift as the city, and this is something new I heard about, we all heard about. The spires on the bridge, there's twelve of them, and they'll be replaced with new ones. And so the ones that come off the bridge will be given to, coupled to Oregon City, coupled to Wes Lynn, to the county. And so we'll have these to plant somewhere in the city as monuments or... Oregon State has had so, I don't know. It's terrible though, so I'll take one. I'll take one. There you go. Yeah, that's right. I agree with that. So I'm in the motion. I don't know. I just, I've been talking about it to everybody, you know, that I've ran into since then. And we took, I took some pictures. I know ODOT did too. So I hope to give some of them to Nancy to put up. But just want to thank them so much. It was, it was incredible. The only other thing I wanted to say is the second weekend of the play at the high school's going on, starting again tomorrow night. There was one night, the opening night, which was canceled due to the massive snowstorm. And so, tomorrow night is movie night, Wednesday, Thursday, or, excuse me, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, seven o'clock at the high school, or Black Box Theater, which is the small theater. Student, student-directed scenes of plays that have been turned into movies.
I just want to make my comment. I'm a bit possible. Then I saw Rocky going down there. I tried to run down because I don't think I would have done it otherwise. But you had something to say?
Well, it's, it's not as exciting as the bridge, but I did have the honor to witness our new mayor give his first state of the city address, which he did very well. So just wanted to mention that. Also, apparently Safeway will be breaking ground on Friday, March fourth, at ten o'clock. So everybody be up at the Danielston Safeway area. Thanks.
Yes. Just two items. First, as I mentioned earlier, I, after being on the commission for two years, finally got my opportunity to do a ride along with the Oregon Cities' finest on Friday night. I went out from nine, nine-thirty to just before midnight with Sergeant Mike Kramer, and rode with the graveyard shift and zigzags throughout the city, responding to various calls. And it was freezing cold. And I just want to commend the force for professionalism was what I witnesses on some domestic calls and some traffic calls. And we're proud. Very good stuff. So I want to thank Chief Conrad for arranging that, and thank Sergeant Kramer for letting me tag along on Friday night. Something I wanted to raise was, a couple months ago, I had requested the city may staff make a presentation during a work session to, regarding these street improvements on Main Street. I think the resolution at that time, and I think, I know this was before the Blue Heron dropped its news on us, was that the city manager was going to arrange, forwarding some plans to us for review. That's not happened. And I got an email today that they're going to present, be a presentation Friday from nine to ten at Book Furniture on all these street improvements. And I think I'd like to re-raise my request, since a presentation has been prepared. I can't make a daytime, you know, I know Commissioner Smith can't. And I really would request that at next Tuesday's work session, when we can all be present, that this same presentation that is being presented on Friday morning be presented to the city commission. There's some, looking over this bulleted list, there are some issues that I think the commission might want to, you know, chime in on. I know that the short of street lighting has been an issue. There is mention on this list of street lighting on the Tenth and Main pedestrian project, and on the main site street, Fifth Street to Tenth Street, Phase One project, lighting is an issue. And I'd really like to know what's going on with, with those projects. So I was wondering if we have a head nod consensus or a vote on having that presentation made to us on that work session on Tuesday. Thank you.
I just have one, one item to report on, and that's that the mayor and I attended a meeting with the key players from Concordia University, and it seemed to come to the conclusion that we're going to go ahead. We turned the project more over to friends of Clark and his community college at this time. And so they'll be working with them to come with the agreements for the Fab Lab and for the different articulation agreements and everything that we'll be working on. They know that right now that the college is in a bond issue campaign and doesn't have a lot of time to put onto something like this. But with the friends taking it over, it's going to be easier to go with. So there was that. And then I had one other request, and that was, I've had people bring to me lately a concern about these little newspaper flyers that are always thrown in people's yards, you know, the food days and weeks. What, who's looking to what our ordinance is about that? It's, it's really, in some places, it's really a trash problem. And we need to look into what, what can be done about that.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I think they're distributed to most people that don't get the ordinance. And this one's part of the, it's part of the newspaper distribution that occurs somewhere.
Yeah, it's so like these empty houses that they're just filling up. Yeah.
I don't know if the, I don't know if the city attorney knows anything about it.
I don't. I'll work with the chief on it. There is vaguely a person in the issue, but I think we're going to deal with that.
Well, if I hear no other comments, I'll ask, are there any agenda items that anybody wants to see at the next commission meeting? We're going into an executive session in a moment, but any agenda items that anybody wishes to see? You've got one thing for the city session or for the central commission. Okay? Now, we'll, we'll go into an executive session. Do I have to say the letter?
Yes, you do.